Is this it?
Oh, sorry. Good evening and welcome to the regular school board meeting for independent school district eight thirty-three. Today is Thursday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty at six thirty P. M. And tonight we are at the district service center in Cottage Grove, Minnesota. Two point O is roll call and Dan will assist us in that.
Belinda Dulce.
Here.
Louise Heinz.
Here.
Simi Patnaik.
Here.
Pat Driscoll.
Here.
Sharon Van Leeu.
Here.
Katie Schwartz. Tracy Burnett.
Here. Three point O is the approval of our agenda. And we will be adding three action items this evening. Ten point five is the approval of wages and benefits for independent employees. Ten point six is the approval of adjustments to the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one calendar. And ten point seven is the approval of our superintendent's contract. And with those additions, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sharon, second by Pat. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Four point O, our district highlights, that will be an agenda item for August twenty-seventh. Five point O is public comment. That is always also on the agenda for August twenty-seventh. Six point O are the consent items. All consent items are considered routine and non-controversial by the school board and will be approved by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items, but prior to the meeting, board members did have the opportunity to review each item and could have requested that they be moved to an action item. Since we didn't have that this evening, I will entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Pat and second by Katie. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven point O are workshop items. Seven point one is our fall learning options. Cue up questions and concerns, sorry. Superintendent Chakowas.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty planning. And now we'll be able to show you that. And I want to make sure that our public knows that that's the first place we'd like you to go when you have questions about what is taking place for the fall and beyond.
Is it working?
All twenty twenty is where we are posting all of that information. So first you'll see our latest news items in addition to our learning models that we could switch to at any point during the school year. And that's our distance learning, hybrid learning, in-person learning, and our K twelve virtual learning academy information, which is where families who signed up previously would be doing distance learning through at least trimester one. Here we have a general timeline. And then these are our quick links. So we have activities and athletics so far, building safety, childcare, our COVID nineteen protocols, health and safety, and masks, nutrition, technology, and transportation. And as we get more information from our planning teams, these will continue to increase and provide that information that families and staff need to know. For an example, I will take you to activities and athletics. And it was just last week, I believe, where the Minnesota State High School League put forth their plan for the fall. And we will continue to provide more information about athletics as we get it from our athletics directors. And so this will continue to be updated as we go throughout the school year. If we were to go to building safety, this is one of the big questions that we have. And so we've, as we get our health and safety information from our planning teams, we have tabs for all of the most frequently asked questions that people have about safety. And I will show you, this is from today. So families will be able to see how we're organizing desks. This is at Gray Cloud Elementary, for example, from the second grade classroom. And so, and then there's a couple other examples of the spacing that is happening in our schools. So people have questions about the cleaning supplies we're using. They have also questions about the standard daily cleaning. And our custodians do this every day, and so our schools are clean to begin with. But they also have some targeted cleaning bullets here that if there was a positive COVID case in a school building, they would do all of this targeted cleaning for that area. And so we have the full list of what custodians will be looking for. One of the other bigger questions is about ventilation. And we'll probably get a, an example map, but Kwame, our director of facilities, has a really good map of where the ventilation can be shut off, where filters can be changed. And this shows here all of the ongoing maintenance that happens in reference to ventilation. That includes ongoing, weekly, quarterly, annually, and what they'll always do if there's a COVID nineteen case. So again, there's lots of information here. We have all of these quick links. And then we also have a staff portal. They can access it here and also this button here. And this is more of the staff information. So we know family or staff have questions about building safety. There are human resources, specific information that they may want to access, including how to do leave requests, paid absence leave, reasonable accommodations, and even retirement. And this will continue to be built out as we get more information of returning to work and returning to work procedures. So if I just come back here, our, again, we have sections for each of our learning models that we could see this year. And we are close to having school schedules posted. And those school schedules are the, the main schedules that people will see during the day. So as we continue to build this out, we explain here what a hybrid learning model is, the expected weekly schedule of an A B system with a flexible instruction day on Friday, and then the tabs you saw on the other pages will be built out here for elementary, middle, and high school with the general school schedules that families can expect on those days. And so we hope to have that either Friday or Monday on this page. And as we do those updates, we continually communicate to staff and families in our established newsletters of what those updates are so that if they're looking for a certain piece of information, they can go back to that website knowing that that section has been updated. You know, one of the bigger questions is what our COVID nineteen protocols are in place where if we were to learn of a positive case. And so here in the staff section, I'll just show you, we have the COVID nineteen protocols. And there's two here. We have the positive case protocol. And that is accessible for staff, but I'll show it to you here. And so Tara, our licensed school nurse, and Napoleon, who's in charge of the part of safety and security, have a full bulleted list of what administrators need to do when we learn about a positive case. And so we have the bullets here of what the, questions they need to ask and what the process is in order to gather the information we need for our licensed school nurse Tara to reach out to M D H and give them the information about the close con, any close contacts that person had or whether it was a low risk. So some of the questions that they just have to pull are is the, the name of the student or staff member, the date of birth, the contact info, when symptoms started, when the positive test results were received, when they were last on site, were they indoors or outdoors, who, what, any other people who were within six feet of them for fifteen minutes or more during their time on site. And that bullet right there is the, what M D H considers as close contact. So a quote, and I think I'll get into it down here, but they'll also ask if there's been any district transportation, and if so, when that was last used. Here's contacts for folks. And so this is the close contact definition. So when we talk about a close contact, M D H defines that as anyone who's within six feet of a person who is sick while they were considered to be infectious. And that's two days prior to symptoms, four, fifteen minutes or more. And so those individuals who are in that close contact must quarantine for fourteen days, even if a negative test result is found. Now, low risk, that means that, you know, based on the controls in place, and we're talking about social distancing, how much time they've spent next to that person, or, you know, cleanliness, types of contact with others, and when symptoms developed, M D H will tell us whether that's a low risk. And then that will define what we do next. And I will show you the communications protocols based off these definitions next here. And so these communications protocols are available to the public on the COVID nineteen protocols area for families and for staff. And so we work closely with M D H and the Washington County Department of Health to determine what action steps for a reported case of COVID nineteen that we need to take. It's not just us deciding how we communicate or what we need to do. It's really guided by the public health officials. And so as you'll see here, we've defined the risk level and the scenarios that we often see. In the left here, the, in the blue, we, we often get the questions, you know, I, I know a student or a staff member, someone in my neighborhood tested positive for COVID nineteen, and what should I do? But, you know, for that definition, that's no risk because they haven't been in contact with the, that person. And the, we would not do a communication for that, obviously, but it is a question we get. If a person thinks they haven't exposed to COVID nineteen, and this is in the green here, or they believe they're exhibiting symptoms, but they don't have test results back, then they're a potential risk and the individual would be asked to stay home and to report their test results once received. Again, that's not a communication, and this is guided by M D H. So in yellow, if a person tests positive for COVID nineteen and they were inside a district building, that is generally a low risk. And no one in the building is at more risk than if they were walking around in the neighborhood. They would, any person who is in close contact with that person would be notified. And so in general, we don't have, we would not be communicating with that. M D H doesn't recommend a communication, but we may be sending it to district staff in the building just as, just, you know, just to the overwhelming concern of COVID. But in general, this is a low risk and a communication would not be required to the whole school community. The second yellow, if a, if a person tests positive for COVID nineteen, but it's determined that social distancing was in place and they did not have close contact with others in a classroom or childcare or another program or athletics, it would also be considered a low risk if those social distancing measures were in place. And again, that's not, that's not considered to be any greater risk than if someone was walking around in the public, you know, going to the grocery store. If they were considered in close contact, then we would, well, even for this low risk, actually, we would communicate to the individuals affected in that classroom or that childcare setting or the athletic team or pod. So in red here, this is where we will communicate. If a person tests positive for COVID nineteen and it's determined by health officials that they had close contact with others in a classroom or a confined area or, you know, any other piece in a building, then that would be considered at risk and affected individuals would likely be asked to quarantine at home. And then the, but the final response in that would be determined by health officials. So we would communicate that to the individuals affected. And again, that could be a whole school. It could be a classroom. It could be down to just a small program after school. M D H will really define how broad we need to react, whether they're involved, and then what communication would need to go out. I, I know there will be concern among, you know, some families and staff who may have heard about a positive case, but we really have to follow what M D H says we need to do. And so, excuse me, and so health and data privacy still applies during all of this. And so we're not going to necessarily communicate beyond what M D H wants, wants us to. And I think that's all. Do you have any questions?
I'd just say too, that's an important point for our families to understand that we're not trying to hide things. We're not determining what we communicate when. And a child may be in a classroom and the next classroom doesn't have any communication about it if there's an issue, but that's all guided by M D H. So that'll be an important point that, that is on the website, but that we continue to reiterate as we go through.
Am I on? Yep, I'm on now. Ooh, this damn thing is hot. What kind of protocols or processes in place to assure that a student is not entering the building but is infected? I mean, how are you going to know whether they have it or not? Is there, is everybody, for instance, if you come into the law school, they have to have that they've already been tested and they, it's three days out, you can come in. So what, what are, how are we assuring these parents that it's, where they're letting their kids go into a safe environment?
Good evening. I guess the measures that we have in place in terms of safety are really relying on everyone, our parents and our family. But we do have and will implement a screening procedure. M D H is not recommending that we do temperature checks for every student. And so really, when we think about illness and the virus and what we're going to face as we enter into the winter season, we really are going to ask families to err on the side of caution if their children are not feeling well. Please keep them home. Sharon, if anyone comes to school sick, we do have what's called isolation spaces that have been designated in all of our schools where students would be isolated until someone is able to pick them up, just so that other students who may come into the health office aren't at risk if they're there, if they're a diabetic or there to get medication, that we have a separate space for students.
Thank you, Julie.
I have a follow-up question, actually. So especially when we're getting into cold and flu season, how are we going to know the difference? I mean, if a parent brings their kid to school or sends their kid to school and they say, oh, they just have a cold, how are we going to know that that's, you know, not something more? And what are we going to do about that?
I think that is going to be our real test as we get into that season. I will say that our licensed school nurse Tara Goble, she did her first round of training today with our health assistants and our other nurses. And so they too are talking about what are those exclusions? And I believe, Pepe, out online, we do have something related to exclusions from school. And so it's well-defined, but we're going to have cases where it's the sniffles or it's a common cold. And so Tara continues to receive updates from M D H about the symptoms and what we're looking for. And I would just say that we're going to err on the side of caution if a student comes into school and it's questionable or we suspect. But we don't certainly want to go overboard if it's a cough or a sniff, sniffles. And that's why I think, is it out there, Simi? Did I see you shake your head? Did you see the exclusionary piece out there? Okay. So we do have a protocol for exclusion of students at school when they're ill. And so I certainly could get more information from our licensed school nurse. That has kind of been her area of oversight, working with M D H. I wanted to share some information. You can certainly ask questions throughout, but this afternoon, we were online with Denise Herman, who is a consultant with the Minnesota Department of Health, and she was online with a number of people here in the, in the room. And I've heard a lot of different analogies, but she used the Swiss cheese analogy, that when we think about the mitigation of the virus, it's like layering Swiss cheese on top piece by piece and hoping that every time we layer a piece of Swiss cheese on top, that we cover up more of the holes. And I think our own licensed school nurse talked about that ability to layer. And so what does it mean when we think about layering? It's the mask, it's the social distancing, it's the hand washing and the hand sanitizing. Really, those three things have to be consistent. The first thing I'd like to just touch on are the supplies that are available. Many Minnesota school districts are struggling to get enough supplies in their schools. We have been so fortunate that Pete in our warehouse, who orders all of our supplies, he has been on top of it. He has secret vendors, at least that's what I tell him. I was back in the warehouse area. I can share with all of you, we have one hundred thousand masks for adults, one hundred thousand masks for students. Sixty-seven thousand masks will be coming from the state, if you remember, as part of our onboarding. We have two thousand shields on hand. We will have another twenty-two hundred and eight shields coming from the state. We have a one hundred desk shields. And a desk shield is going to be used perhaps as an accommodation if a student cannot wear a regular mask. If a shield, a shield may be more appropriate, but in certain cases, if they're not able to, there's what's called a desk shield. And for those of you who may be familiar with the test takers, basically, it's a little test taker that surrounds a student set is clear plastic. And so that would be put up around the space where the student is working. So we have those on hand, thousands of gloves, hand sanitizer in big vats, like tubs of hand sanitizer, and that gets pushed out to custodians at the school, and then they're refilling bottles. Lots of spray bottles. The little spray mechanism is in a hot demand, and many districts are not able to find those to use those throughout the school and in classroom. And most recently, we had six hundred and sixty face shields donated from Horton Orthodontics. And they were donated directly to special education for students who require speech and physical therapy so that we can see the facial expression. So thank you to them. In addition, Kwame purchased what's called, I'm calling them foggers, at least that's how it was described to me. But in each of our three high schools, there are big machines that have a seventy-five foot hose where they can actually go in and spray sanitizing solution throughout an entire classroom. But it can be done so quickly because of the length of the instrument as you go into classrooms. It's real quick and it basically just fogs the area. And so while we have the biggest machines at each of our high schools, each school is equipped with a small fogger in case there are any outbreaks. So it's that instant ability to clean and sanitize the space very, very quickly. So we definitely have a lot of supplies on hand, and right now, those supplies are being allocated and sent out to the schools. Once, or if schools need additional supplies, then those, those requests will come through building custodians. Training for all district staff on safety protocols, that's been a question about what does that training look like? I can tell you, next Wednesday, all of our system leaders, including principals, assistant principals, directors, we also have our teachers' union leaders on there, as well as our licensed school nurse, we will all go through the initial training for safety protocols. That includes training around self-screening, masks, taking masks on and off, how do you store them? I know I was watching our videos for the PowerPoint and I was learning a lot about masks. And I was also observing how people put masks away and really, it's the outside part that you don't want to be touching because that's where the germs are. We will talk about hand washing and the use of hand sanitizers, social distancing, including what areas do we need those in and having dots actually on the floor and markers, handling materials and manipulatives. We're working hard to make sure student materials and manipulatives, that students have their own, so they're not sharing. The training will be, also included in the training will be visitors. And again, we'll start with system leaders. System leaders will take that to the schools, and then, of course, the teachers will be working on implementing those things with students. I, I would say that when we think about these safety protocols, we cannot be complacent. There is no room when we think about the Swiss cheese and the layering as the adults who are modeling for the kids, we cannot be complacent. And we have to make sure that we're enforcing them. I think sometimes with these rules, it's going to be tougher for the adults and maybe easier for the kids. And we want to make sure that our training really outlines and emphasizes the importance of safety and making sure in order to mitigate the virus that we are following, following all of those safety protocols. And then we've been also getting a lot of questions on what does it look like in each school? And I'd love to say that the district has a manual for every single school, but as you can imagine, every school looks differently. It has a unique layout. What I can share with you, that the principals are taking those safety protocols that we just talked about and applying those to their school, including thinking about arrival and dismissal times, hallways, what do transitions look like, bathroom use, especially in our smaller elementary schools where you have one bathroom. What does that look like? Is there, is there high-touch areas being wiped down in between? Lockers. Today we learned lockers actually aren't the concern, you know, the touching of the lockers because the virus is respiratory. The concern about lockers is the gathering of kids by a locker. So classrooms having desks spread out, and you got to see some examples this evening, but many of our classrooms are being set up that way already. The lunchrooms, what does the protocol look like in the lunchroom? I think it was Laura Luschek who had a picture of her lunchroom. There were three or four tables that normally held like ninety-six students. And I think with social distancing in place, it was fifteen students that could be in that area. So what you'll see is many of our schools, especially in our cafeterias, they're using their entire gym spaces to make that happen so that students can be socially distanced while they're eating. Drinking fountains, and what's the protocol around drinking fountains? Those are going to be closed down. Bottle fillers will be available. Using shared supplies, common spaces, our playgrounds. When you think about students being out on the playground, the protocol that's being put in place is a division of students so that there are three separate areas on the playground. And depending on the day, different students would be able to rotate to different areas. Some would use the blacktop, some would use the actual playground, and another group might use the field. And so things are going to look different. And so depending on which school, all of these protocols that we talked about will be And so depending on which school, all of these protocols that we talked about will be applied then specifically. And I know some of our principals have already made videos that they're sharing with their staff and sharing with their families about how it's going to look when we implement social distancing, hand washing, and wearing of masks. Any questions? You get to see some pictures behind me. Yeah, Katie.
No, I just itch.
I can say from maintenance, every week I get an updated list of all of the supplies that we're purchasing. And so it's really nice to know that we keep a full order of what we're getting in. And so they know what the stock is, they know what's going out, and so that way then we can replenish all of the sanitizing equipment that we need.
Julie, I have a question.
Sure, Simi.
For things like...
Oh, Simi, do you have your? Is it on?
Oh, yeah.
It's not on me, but... I think you probably need to put it on. Oh, better?
There you go.
I can hear you now.
Sorry. You know, we've heard from, or I've heard concerns from various people in the community about, like, how do you actually enforce things like social distancing and masking? You know, how is one teacher going to enforce it for 20 rowdy middle schoolers, for example, who happen to be in the class? And so is there, as part of that training, is that, is that going to cover like, or is there going to be any, I guess, training provided to students about how they're expected to comply with these mandates?
And Simi, that training is going to come from our teachers. I think about, you know, a parallel to that might be training students, elementary students, when they go to centers? And how, how do you work independently with a group? And so that same training needs to take place with our students. And there again, if we are asking students to be six feet apart, then that's what we have to expect all the time. And you know, I think initially, I think it's going to be a big adjustment for our students, but it's going to take a lot of reminders and a lot of prompts. But if we want to mitigate and keep students in school, we need to have those measures in place. And so that responsibility, Simi, would lie back with our classroom teachers. I'm sure that in some of our schools, our building principals may do something virtually or a video for students to watch so they can actually see it. I think it's one thing to tell students, but teaching means that you're modeling and showing.
One other question is, are there any, are there any concerns about, I've heard some things about, you know, in my, you know, my kid can smell things coming from other classrooms or hear things coming from other classrooms. And so there's, parents are concerned about ventilation systems. Can you talk a little bit about what our ventilation systems are like, just to help people understand?
Keith is going to actually touch on ventilation. What I can say, and I'm probably going to steal some of Keith's words, is that our community and our taxpayers have invested well over $96 million, I think, over the last number of years in ventilation. And so we're very much up to date. But Keith, being the science person, is going to talk about the air filters and air quality.
Julie, I have another question. So are the teachers the ones that are going to have the responsibility of cleaning down the desks and all the area in between their classes? And if that is the case, are we looking at how we're going to? Because if there's generally a few minutes in between each class, what are those students going to do that are coming from the next class while they're waiting for all those desks to be cleaned?
Yeah. You know, one thing that we talked about today when we were on our phone call is that, well, that is something that needs to be done. And of course, like any typical classroom, if a student spills something, you wipe it up. But the bigger concern is the mask, social distancing, and the hand washing. You know, we asked the question, or I asked the question about bathrooms. And do they, after every group goes in, do you need to go wipe the high-touch areas? And her suggestion was that you don't have to do that all the time. Because what they're finding is that the virus doesn't live on surfaces. And so I think when it relates to the high school and middle school, and I know that's a little bit different because we will have kids moving. The great thing about the elementary model is they're kind of adopting the bubble. It's just an easier model there where kids stay in their cohort and teachers come to them. At the high school, Christine, have you talked about at all what you're going to do in transition?
It's going to be a little bit longer and staggered time for kids to be in class.
Yep.
Whether you rotate hallways or sides of the hall or different areas of the building.
And one of the things I think is important, that we've had a lot of experience getting ready for this with our Kids Club folks. They've had kids since last March and have worked with social distancing, worked with, every classroom will have a spray bottle that is a fast drying solution that we use to spray surfaces quickly and it dries. So we've practiced a lot and our Kids Club folks have done a great job. We've had a lot of success. So all these things that are in place, we've been working on since last March, too.
Thank you.
With the staggered dismissal times that you're talking about, is that being thought of when students enter in the morning and dismiss? In the afternoon as well?
And Louise, I just got a video that one of our elementary principals put together. And as she was making it, she had different grade levels going into different doors. And so it was all spaced out. She knew where the bussers were coming in. She knew where the people who were dropped off in cars. And so that, those are some of the logistics that each school has to figure out based on their school setup, access to doors. But definitely dismissal and arrival time, we will need to make sure we stagger. Keith, you want to talk about HVAC? Thank you.
Thanks. Pepe talked a little bit, showed the HVAC, the cleaning schedule and the different things that our folks will be doing on a regular basis. But Kwame Aym, our director of facilities, has just done a phenomenal job of analyzing everything that we need to look at. As Julie said, all of our HVAC systems are, are up to date and have been redone. The last major rounds happened after that 2015 levy when we put in the entryways, all those HVACs. But we're on a schedule for every so many years, all of our schools get updated. So right now, we're updated and we have the proper airflow that is, is moving through. So a couple of things that Kwame has done to enhance what's happening with the HVACs. There's different filters you can use and, and we are using the filters that MDH recommends. But people have said, well, if you go another level up, I think they're called MERV or MRR, and they're numbered, that that might be better. Or what if you looked at a HEPA filter? HEPA filters are, are in, in the most, the strongest, I guess, filtration system and, and used in a lot of different areas like hospitals. But HEPA filters are dense and they, they reduce the amount of airflow. So what Kwame has told me is we're increasing our airflow past what the normal efficiency rates are to, to move as much air through our buildings as possible because, as Julie said, it's a respiratory disease. And that's why when you're outside in the wind, you're in a better place that that virus doesn't come through and areas like that. So he has looked at how we will increase the airflow. And they are going to be looking at those filters, inspecting and changing them on a more regular basis. They have protocols in place that if we do have a positive case in a building, then they'll go through and redo the filtration and take care of any of the airflow handlers that, that would have moved air out of that classroom. It's all based on what MDH has, has said. So there isn't other than me breathing through this mask right now. It's a great mask because it really is sealed around my face. But we feel very good about our HVAC system and he is analyzing that. He also, they are looking at the, there's monitors that they, they look for CO2 volumes and different things through the airflow that they have, that they will be monitoring throughout the day. If there's an issue, if anyone has a concern, then he does work with an outside consultant. Some people have asked, well, why don't you bring people in to look at that? We have had that done and we can do that, that again. But he is very confident that the HVAC system meets all of the requirements. And the airflow is one of the important things that we are, are feeling good about where we are with the HVAC system. And then, as Julie had mentioned, they really were stressing today, since it's a respiratory illness, that we want to sanitize at night and sanitize the, the hard surfaces as often as possible. But the masks and keeping kids apart are the most important aspect. Kids will be going out for recess. We want to get them outside when the weather is, is accommodates that other than those severe cold days in the winter. But I feel that when you look through, if you spend time on the website, I hope that alleviates some of the concerns about the HVAC. And they've thought through all sorts of different scenarios.
Thank you. You just said that kids would go outside for recess. Are there, is there anything for older kids to spend time outside or any classes that we can encourage to be outside for the middle school and high school kids?
I'll let Christine, if they've talked about it. I don't specifically have the, that we've had conversations. But it's always, a teacher has the prerogative to go outside. And right now, it'd be great to have classes outside. I think it'll be up to teachers. I'm not sure if that, they built anything in the second schedules.
We haven't built that yet, but we have talked about that being an option, particularly for kids who want to take their students outside.
Yep. Yeah, the more that we, if we have a nice, longer fall and, and things start to change as we get into the winter with vaccines or whatever happens with the virus, the pandemic, I'd love to hope that we would be able to spend time outside and then have a different outlook for our schools. Though that there's a lot of news out there that may not, that may not be accurate. I'm sorry.
As far as the ventilation, if you talked about the protocol, changing the filters if there's a positive case, would the filters that you'd be changing just be the, if it's an elementary school, just that classroom where that elementary student is? If it's a secondary school, would it be every class that that child was in that day or how would that work?
You know, I can't answer for sure. I know Pepe, I'm sorry, Pepe has thought about it too, but Kwame has thought about that. It would be those, they might change all the filters and the handles. I'll ask tomorrow. Do you have that answer?
I would just say that in some of the maps that I've seen from Kwame, they're all color-coded. And so they know which filters go to which classrooms. So I think on any map, there's four or five. And so they would know and then the filters would get changed for that, those spaces in the school. So technically, Linda, the student had been into multiple classrooms. They would look at where those classrooms were and the filters would be changed at all ages of those classrooms. But not every classroom, as I understand it, has its own filter. It goes to multiple classrooms or like a pod or wing. And I say that because in the color-coded maps, it shows the filtration and then it shows the area that it covers.
What about stuff like buses? You've talked about how like the classrooms have the foggers or the, and the sprays and things that are accessible to staff and students. But how do the buses get sanitized?
They have their own. And Dan, you can jump in here, but, but the buses will all have the same type of spray bottles and sanitation. So after a route, that they can quickly wipe down the buses and sanitize before the next route. Or if there's any issue during kids getting off and are on the bus. Is there, Dan, any more you would add about the sanitation? They have talked about it and have a protocol in place.
Uh, yeah. Mainly, after every time the kids get off, you know, between routes and stuff, they'll, the drivers with help from other people will clean the bus completely. And then, when we come in for the night, then we'll do one more deep cleaning before the next day. And also, we will, as long as we possibly can, we'll have the windows open during all the routes.
And we've talked a lot about, am I still loud enough? We talked a lot about cleaning and stuff like that. Do the people doing the cleaning, the custodial staff and facilities, do they have, do they have all the protective equipment they need to go out and clean without being put unduly at risk?
I believe they do. I don't know that the custodians are, that there's a feeling they need to be in a full hazmat-type PPE, but they have the masks, they have the gloves. And that is something that training in Kwame will be looking at. And again, Dan or Julie, if you have spoken specifically about is it, needs for the custodian, are there concerns that they don't have what they need? I, as talking to Kwame, I didn't believe that we were concerned that we weren't able to safely clean at night. Yeah.
How, how are we? For social distancing, how are we putting kids on the bus with, and allowing for social distancing? I mean, how, I don't, I don't know how many kids ride on a bus, but obviously, you won't have that many. So what are we doing about that?
Not even close, because you have the, you cut the buses in half and I think is it 92 is, or 80 something? But once you cut that in half, then you have to social distance. So that number goes down to about 15 to 17 on a bus. Does that?
That changed, I think, Dan. It went, they brought that back up to 50% straight. So I think when I did one of the last focus groups, I had said it was 50% of the capacity, so 66 students on a bus, it's 33 kids. But then you had to use social distancing with, which only allowed 15 to 18. And so MDE changed that, Dan, I'm looking at you too, to 50% straight capacity. And so some of the considerations are making sure siblings sit with each other. Some of it is the position within the seats, that you might have three kids sitting in one row, but one's on, one's by the window seat, one's in the center, and one's by the other window. And so some of those considerations in terms of the busing. But again, Dan talked about the layering, windows open, masks are on. You know, social distancing to the best of their ability when they're on the school bus. But they did change that to 50% capacity.
Well, that's good because I know that was one of the concerns that kept, that was brought up and to ask MDE and MDH because trying to, to drive a bus with that few students, we wouldn't have enough buses to run our routes. What Transportation is working on are parents who said that they could transport their child and will transport their child. So we get accurate numbers and then we can finalize the routes. We think in the preliminary survey on the number of parents who said they would or could, that's going to help a lot with having the smaller numbers on the bus that we believe will be able to transport. The other thing that they're looking at is maybe we won't run the exact type of route, but we'd run more of a city route that would come through where kids may, may walk to a, a collection point or a number of them, not to have a lot of kids together. But that hasn't been finalized. The routes haven't been. But Carrie Olson and her staff have been working on all sorts of scenarios. And knowing that they, they loosened a little bit on the number of students that'll be on a bus, that'll be much more helpful.
And perhaps the, the folks who keep their kids at home for, online.
Yep. And that, yeah, that'll reduce the number of riders. I know that, that are, there are parents that feel comfortable about their, their students attending in a hybrid situation, but they'd rather drive them. It's easier and, you know, on the buses, they, what might happen. And I think there's a concern, I'll just get them to school.
And Keith, I just went back, an email from Andy Smith, who is, who is our assistant director of transportation. And he just shared that on most buses with the capacity, we would be able to transport 35 students underneath the hybrid.
Yeah, that helps quite a bit. The last thing I would say is there's questions about how will you make sure that my child does not get sick? We can't guarantee that unfortunately. Our goal is to mitigate everything, as Julie said, hand sanitizing, the masks, and what we do to do everything we can to stop the spread and follow the guidance of MDH. But kids are, as, as they move about, there isn't a way to say that we know with the protocols in place that if kids come in school, there won't be any type of transmission. As, as hard as it is to track where kids might have been exposed, there's a lot of places after they leave us too. But we are doing our best and, and adults are in the building too and there's, there's concerns. And I feel very good about the work that Tara has done with our health and safety and Dan's on that committee and Kwame and all of the things they thought through to make sure that our kids are as safe as possible when they come in. And again, following MDH guidelines, having the MDs and the epidemiologists tell us that if you do this, you will be safe from what they are, they know about transmission, that, that we feel good about the protocols that we have in place. But it's, it's a concern and we need to, as Julie said, be vigilant. We need our community to be partners with us because at home and being out in the community, we've heard from our epidemiologists that if everyone's wearing masks and doing the things throughout the community, that's going to help us in the school. So I think, and I think our, our parents are partnering. They want to do everything that they can to make sure that things go well, obviously, and their kids are safe. But we, we, there isn't a guarantee that schools can make about that no one will unfortunately, that there still are some risks as we go through.
Keith, is there a threshold for infections where we would have to potentially, you know, shut down a classroom or shut down a school?
Yep. And every district, and we have a team, our COVID response team, that will be working closely with MDH. And we have our county epidemiologist on that team. And what they hope to do is be very strategic about when they close things down if there's positive cases. It might be that one classroom is closed down and right next door, the classroom is fine. So the rest of the schools can stay in session, but a school, a classroom might be quarantined for the 14 days. It might be that just that a few students in that classroom. It could be that a whole grade level or it could be that a school. And then it might be a, a couple of schools. So they are really looking at not making blanket, closing a whole district, a whole school if they, they don't have... closing a whole district, a whole school if they, they don't have to. And so that team will be examining and meeting on a regular basis to look at the case week to week. And if we have a positive case, we'll be guided by MDH and the epidemiologists on what we do.
So if those kinds of decisions are made, what kind of lead time will Karen have about kids not being able to go back to school and having to find, you know, if it's an elementary school, alternate childcare or? And then what happens educationally for those kids?
Well, first, educationally, we will work with, with the kids that are in the class, just like if a student was out because they broke a leg. If they're ill, we will work on the makeup assignments. And so it'll be, if it's a, the whole class, it's going to, it'll be a different situation. And, and the teacher may look at different options with some of the virtual. If it's a few kids, we'll work through, just as we would with any other student who was ill for two weeks. As far as the lead time, I haven't been in conversations with Tara on what that might look like. Is that a turnover where we would, MDH would tell us, but I, do you, do you know?
I would say that the lead time would probably be no different than we, when we've had the flu. And we've had schools that, you know, are every day they're monitoring with MDH and sending in the number of students that are absent. And there gets to a point in working with MDH where sometimes it's a day warning, where we just say the numbers have gotten too high. But it's not usually like a week or two weeks and we're going to close. It's usually, I would say, within a week's time. So maybe a day to kind of plan and transition that.
So that may be important as we finalize to communicate to just have those emergency-type plans that you're ready, just like we talk about with snow days, having that alternative daycare in case something changes with the weather.
What about if a student is sick in the classroom and rides a bus? The kids on that bus, how do you know which kids were exposed and weren't? Will they have assigned seats or?
And that's part of the contact tracing, and MDH will help us with it. And, and Tara Goble is a contact tracing, she's been trained to do that. Now, she, with her other responsibilities, I, I don't believe she'll step into full contact tracing, but she can help a lot, because we'll need to investigate, go out and question where did, who did the student sit with? And, and I'm not sure if drivers will assign seats. If we have that, I, I don't know if Transportation has looked at that. We did have assigned seats in the past for different reasons, but they may look at that. But knowing, as drivers know, the students, and if it's smaller groups, hopefully that the contract tracers can find who was with that student. And as Pepe mentioned earlier, it's about, were you in contact for 15 minutes or longer? And if it's a, a short route, even if they sat a high risk if they were on the bus five minutes together. But that is, that's, those are good questions, and those are the things we have to track down with MDH and, and their guidance on how they trace. And so they can tell us who does need to quarantine and who is come back to school.
Great. Thank you. Wow, it seems like you've thought of everything. No, not tonight. Thank you. No, not tonight.
We do, but as a public board meeting, it's, it's not a time to discuss with the audience. And so, yep, we, we will have that information out, and, and our website has the hybrid schedules.
Not tonight, no. There's no.
Yep, there's, our next meeting has public comment. Also on our website, you can send us questions as well. There's areas that, if you want to have a response that way, but the next meeting has public comment where you could ask questions.
But that, no, but that, we wouldn't respond to that though. I mean, there's.
Right, but he could give it to us and then we could, we could answer them. Not at the meeting, but yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't, why don't I talk to him?
All right. 8.0, information items. 8.1 is a financial update from our Director of Finance and Operations, Dan Pyon.
Well, this will be, hope you can hear me through my mask. I think my mask is a little too thick. Good evening, Chair Burnett, members of the School Board, members of the Cabinet. Tonight, we're finally back to, you know, giving you a live PowerPoint. It's been a long time. And I know you don't want to go too long without hearing about the budget, so we'll give you an update, our, our monthly budget update. I went to a, a funeral yesterday. It was for my, my uncle, my, my mom's brother. And it was surreal. It was tough. He was 95, so he had a great life. And it's the every side of the family, so it was really tough on everybody. Nobody could touch, nobody could hug. And of course, they were telling stories, and he was a hard, hard-working Irishman. And he was married for 69 years. He was 95 years old when he died. And one of his granddaughters told the story. She said that she went, she asked grandpa, you know, what's the secret to a long, great marriage? And he went on and on about, he said a few words, like, you know, sharing and respect and all that stuff. And then he said, he said to her, he said, Amy, you know what though? You know, when you're standing up there doing those vows and everybody talks about, this is 50-50 partnership and all this kind of stuff. He goes, that's a lie. He goes, it's 90-10, and it's not in my favor. And sometimes we, we kind of feel that way when we battle through all this stuff, that every day we're running 90-10 and not in our favor. So with our budget update, tonight, we're going to talk about enrollment. This is the time of year when I like to inform the board how enrollment's going and how important enrollment is in our financial situation. So as of Monday, August 10th, our K-12 student count was 18,715. Budget-wise, that's about 110 behind budget, although it's, it's kind of tough to tell right now. We haven't had the usual influx and outflow that we normally have in, in a normal summer. Nothing is the same. We'll, we'll keep you updated. And when I meet with CFAC every month, we go over the enrollment numbers. That, that number includes those enrolled in the Virtual Learning Academy. And right now, as a forecaster in the financial world, the impact of COVID-19 on enrollment is, is still very unclear at this point. All I can do is kind of wait and see. It's very important to look at enrollment all the time for many reasons, and you've probably been told this many times, and I'll keep telling you this until, until there's a funeral for me. Enrollment drives most of our revenue. And as you can see, we've always had a steady increase in enrollment here since, since 2010, when we had 16,864 students to right now, where we have 18,866, as including some preschool and stuff, and we'll talk about that. We've seen an increase of about 1% a year. Some years, it's a little higher, some years it's a little lower. But generally, we're increasing about 1% every year. And as the number gets higher, the 1% number gets higher. So right now, we're looking at adding about 180 to 200 students every year. And as we looked at our long-range facility planning and kind of had to put that on hold, we've still been having contact with, with the cities of Woodbury and Cottage Grove and St. Paul Park and Newport. And we're still seeing those houses being built. We have not seen it down in our lobby here of people coming in to register, but we know those houses are still coming. And those cities are saying that the building has not changed much at all because of COVID-19. Like I said, enrollment drives the budget. This is in your pack-up, so you can kind of see what the raw numbers are. What I do is a little different than what our demographer did when we did the long-range facility planning study. I generally, on a conservative level, take a cohort survival method. And I actually use 10 years' worth of information, and I look to see what the changes between grades over the last 10 years are, and then I multiply that into the formula to project future growth. It's been pretty, it's been pretty spot-on, maybe off 10 to 20, and I use this for budgeting reasons. And I try to budget a little less than what, what we're projecting. But as you can see, the growth is around that 1% for the next four years using this method. And we're, we're projecting in 2021, 18,866 ADMs, of which we would, we would get funding for. So what, why do I talk about enrollment all the time? What are the implications? Well, in our district in general, each student raises about $10,266 in state aids and levies. And it's pretty easy to see when you have a drop in enrollment, how that's going to affect your, your, your revenue, as, as well as if you see an increase in enrollment, how it's going to affect your revenue. To equal about a million dollars in revenue, it's about 97 students. So if you go up 100 students, you're going to lose about a million dollars. If you go, I mean, if you go down 100 students, you're going to lose a million dollars in revenue. And if you go up 100 students, you're going to raise a million dollars in revenue. The 10-266 number is based on what's called ADMs. That's per student. We are paid per pupil unit, which is created by doing a waiting system. So even though you might have a total number of 18,715 students, you're going to have different funding for it, because they wait, the high school students or the secondary students, 7 through 12, at 1.2, and they wait the K through 6 students at 1.0. So the, obviously, the more secondary students you have, you're going to have a, a higher average of dollars. And that 10-266, this is just the number that is there right now. That changes all the time. But it's actually a little, it's a little different if you use it per pupil unit, but that's, that's not really the point. The point is, if you have more secondary students, or you're increasing in that part, you're going to raise more revenue. The theory being that, I don't know what the theory was. I guess the theory is that it costs more to, to teach a secondary student than an elementary student. If we actually took all the revenue based on the waiting method and allocated it amongst the schools that way, we would probably give more, put budget more money into the high schools and the middle schools, and that money would have to come at the cost of the elementary schools. So we budget based on need. We budget, a zero-based budget on what's needed. We don't budget it based on the way the revenue comes in. In addition to receiving funds for the K-12 students, we also receive enrollment times Formula Aid on early childhood special education. That's funded at about 25% per student, meaning that if we have 800 early childhood special ed children, we'll get funded for about 200 ADMs, the 200 multiplied by the $10,000. And that's mainly based on how much time they're spending in school. Everyone would be different, but it usually runs, so when they tell me that, when Anna tells me they have 900 students there, I can kind of know that I can put in 220 into that spot to figure out my revenue. Voluntary pre, pre kindergarten classes, there's two of them. One's called voluntary pre-K and one's called School Readiness Plus. Those are programs through the Department of Education, in which we apply and get approved for. And those are preschool students that were paid based on the formula. We count them as, as ADMs also. And then extended time is credit recovery classes, in which a student is working outside the school day. And the highest you can go on, one student would be 1.2. And then our funding is also reduced by the number of kids in our post-secondary option programs, PSEO. Really, the, the reason would be that the time that the student goes to the college would come off of what we get for aid, because the aid is going to the college. What we've done with Century College, which is the one that most of our students go to, and we'll probably work on arrangements with Inver Grove too, is because of the way the funding works, we partner with them, and we claim the students fully, Century, and we pay Century College the tuition. And that gives Century College more tuition and gives us, it saves us about $100,000. It's a great partnership. So it's a little different. When I talk about enrollment, I'm always counting the Century kids as full, even though they might not be in the classroom. But I'm counting the Inver Grove kids only at about 0.2, depending on how much time they're away from the school. If we just look at a quick budget update, based, you know, looking at the enrollments and things, I wanted to make a few points. Just, just a reminder what our budget is for '21, in which we're, we're budgeting a projected deficit of about $6.8 million, mainly because we have projected expenses that are higher than we had anticipated in, in some of the other areas in which the funding is running a little bit behind, mainly in special education. Special education, you spend your dollars this year, you won't get the aid for until the next year. As I looked at what's happened, and I wanted to put this in the pack-up so you could look at it. Let me go this in a little more detail at the CFAC meetings, but on this chart, you can see what, what has happened, the activity of '17, '18, and '18, '19. And then as I looked at all the numbers so far, most everything's in. There'll be, there'll be stray expenses. It would be paying things like that. There'll be expenses for COVID that are coming in, but then we just got some more good, good news on some funding that will get some extra money. And as Julie held up that, excuse me, held up that spreadsheet, the total spent on that spreadsheet right now is about $420,000. It adds up fast, but we do have CARESAC money, and then we have a new Corona's Relief Fund that just came out, in which we'll get about $4 million. And that $4 million has to be spent by the end of this year. The CARESAC fund money doesn't have to be spent until the end of 2022. So anyway, as I looked at the 1920, 1920 revised budget and the projection, and looking at the expenses and the revenues, we're actually looking at a little better than we thought, and we may end up around $12 million in unassigned fund balance, which is still not to our goal, but it's getting close, a little better than we had budgeted. But as we look at next year's budget, you can see that deficit of budgeted will drop us down to about $5.2 million in, in unassigned fund balance, which is about 2%, which is below our goal of 5%. And then as I look at the next year, because of the economy, business managers have to pretty much assume that the formula's not going to increase. We know what the formula will be for this next budget year, because that was part of the fiscal year. Next time they meet, the legislature, outside of a special session, they will be deciding on the formula for the next two years. And if the economy is, is down, it's going to be tough to probably see if they're going to have an increase. So when I projected for '21, '22, I basically only took the enrollment increase as an increase in funding. And I also put some special education increase in funding, mainly based on, on the increase in expenses we've had. So it really works out to about a 0.71% increase. And then in projecting '21, '22, we will have some more sophisticated models as we move along. I basically took the average increase in expenses over the last three years and applied it to those accounts. And you can see that's producing about a $21 million expenses over revenues in '21, '22. And obviously, this budget has not been put together yet. Creating about, creating a fund balance of, of a negative $9 million, in which, as we talked before, we'll probably, we're looking at a reduction program during this next year for the '21, '22 budget of about nine million, nine to 10 million dollars.
Hey, Dan?
Yes?
So if, if you're saying that the $21 million, $22 million increase in revenue over expenses is just based on like the last three years of modeling, it's not, there's not any one particular thing that would be driving that?
Yeah, yeah, just what we looked at for what's happened over the last three years. Well, a little more sophisticated was if we look at the contracts and stuff, but generally, our wages and benefits have gone up about 4% each, each year.
Okay. And then for the $9 million or negative $9 million projected fund balance, if we're, if you're looking at nine to 10 million dollars in cuts, so. if you're looking at nine to 10 million dollars in cuts, so would that just get us back to a fund balance of zero, or are you looking at some other things that would get us, or would, or am I missing something? Because I think we.
Yeah, based on this, it would only give us to, just staying alive. We'll have to look at what capital and supplies that we can just chop off in bigger chunks to get our fund balance up. So for instance, if we forego any, any operating capital expenses in the maintenance department, you know, vehicles, equipment, all this stuff stays flat for a couple of years, we could probably save a couple million dollars, things like that. But for this purpose, I just ran those numbers based on the history.
So then this is not?
I think we can get by with $9 million. I didn't go in and itemize each, more cuts.
So is the idea that the $9 million, the $9 million in cuts in '21, '22 would get us back to sort of a zero fund balance, and then the $10 million in cuts the following year would get us to the fund balance that we have, the fund balance guidelines that we have as a board?
I think if I itemize, if we itemize some cuts in the fixed, in some of the supplies in capital, we would have a larger fund balance. This is a real conservative estimate, so that if we cut nine, we should have about four or five million dollars left. That, that would be my goal.
All right, keep turning it off. The, the second $9 million would get us to the 5% fund balance? Or the first $9 million would get us to the 5% fund balance?
It won't get us to 5%, but that would be a goal for the next year. We'll just have to see what more we have to do. And it depends on what the funding comes into, and the enrollment and things like that.
Are the expenses artificially inflated because of COVID? Or are the, are the, is the modeling using expenses from before COVID?
Some of it's a little bit artificially, because the supplies this year were higher than we anticipated. And we do have some CARES Act money that I didn't factor into the revenues, and now the CRF, which I found out about after I did the PowerPoint, the new money that came in, about $4 million for us. And that's going to be used up this year, so that revenue will show up in next year's budget. So we'll probably come in a little higher, too. It's somewhat of a moving target, but.
Can the money, the $4 million in the CARES Act funding, can that be used to offset existing expenses? Or is that used, are those specifically for COVID-related? Like, what I'm asking is, can you use that CARES Act money to pay for expenses that we're already paying for, that, you know, like preservation of jobs or something of that nature? Or are these meant to be specific, you can tie them back to COVID expenses?
It's not completely clear right now on that. It basically said, you know, use it for anything related to COVID. We were looking at transferring money from a reserved account to take, because we, our food service had run into a deficit, but by law, we, they could not use food service funds to make up for that, so we were going to transfer money. We won't have to do that. We can use the CRF money for that. We have actually a committee run by our Fiscal Services Director, and it includes people like Bob Berkowitz and Kelly Jansen and Kwame Ayeem. And they'll find a way to spend the $8 million, but we're trying to do the best we can to make it work into our budget also. But it's not exactly clear on the next one. We just kind of got notification on Friday, and it really wasn't, if you read it, it's basically anything that has to do with COVID-related things. Well, we can find lots of that. Did you have another question?
Yeah.
Okay. As far as, just a chart to show you, the revenues expenditures in the general fund, as you can see, over the years, have been pretty, pretty much the same, although you can see that in the 2021, there's a gap between the expenditures and the revenues. And my revenues are pretty conservative. I really have to see what happens in special ed, how soon that money comes in. And that's, like you said, assuming that there's no formula, zero formula increase. And as we talked about, the, the fund balance projections, as you look at them. So some things I just wanted to have some considerations on, some things I kind of keep harping about, and you probably know a million times by now. But the Minnesota State Legislature, they set the formula amount per pupil. And of course, you know, we multiply that amount by the enrollment to determine our district revenues, most of our district revenues. Some things you have to consider, the state aid portion of our revenue comprises about 55 to 60% of our revenue. Most of the other revenue we get is from the operating levy. The operating levy of about 1,501 out of 1,036 per pupil unit is set, and that does not increase each year. The formula is about $6,767, and that increases based on what the legislature says. The local optional revenue of $724 per pupil unit, which at one point was all approved by the voters, at about, you know, you can see at about $2,200 per pupil, but that's also set, and that does not increase. So you got that section of about $2,200 per pupil that is very needed revenue, and we're very grateful to the taxpayers for, but that never increases unless you ask for more, or you have a question that says this includes an inflation factor. And if the inflation is in there, then it will go up based on inflation, the inflation rate. So the only way that we can increase our revenue, if there's no formula increase, is by having more enrollment. So as I said before, consideration should be made to reset the operating levy, which is now in three parts. Combine it all, the tax impact should be negative, actually, because the property values have gone up, and we're not asking for more money. We'll put it all in one question and add the inflation factor. And those are things that we're going to have to consider as we look at the budget reductions and we look at the whole budget plan. And that's the conclusion of our budget update for this time. And once again, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Dan, you said that you, that the projection for next budget cycle is that we wouldn't get a increase in the formula fund?
In the projection, I assumed no.
Okay.
No form of increase. Which is pretty much the thought of the day right now, but you never know.
So then the only way to increase, to grow the revenues, then, is through increased enrollment?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Dan. 8.2, review recommendations from Minnesota State High School League, our Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, School Board Chair Burnett, Board members, Dr. Jacobus. Tonight, I'd like to give you an overview of the recommendations and guidelines from the Minnesota State High School League regarding fall sports and activities. On August 4th, the Minnesota State High School League Board of Directors approved moving forward as scheduled with four fall activities. Girls tennis, boys and girls cross-country, boys and girls soccer, and girls swimming and diving, beginning on August 17th, with some limitations. The Board of Directors also approved moving football and volleyball to a modified spring season. The High School League also gave guidance and safety measures that are required in place. For example, all aspects of athletics, including meetings, practices, competitions, transportation, and facility usage, must align with the requirements of the Minnesota Department of Education Plan for Return to Learning. And they must follow the requirements in the Minnesota Department of Health Guidance on Youth Sports, and must include required actions identified by the Governor's Executive Orders. They must follow the protocols, such as Julie talked about earlier, with COVID-19 diagnosis or students with symptoms. The number of teams involved in a competition will be limited. Season length will be reduced to 80% or less. The number of competitions will reduce to 70% or less. Again, with football and girls volleyball being delayed till spring, coaches do have an option to have practices this fall, if they choose to. For schools or school districts that are required by our localized metrics to be distance learning, all practices will be limited to virtual contact only. So for example, if by following the Governor's orders, we are in distance learning, all practices would be virtual. What I'd like to get input from you on is if, as a school district, we decide, or as a board, you decide, that we are in distance learning, and our localized metrics don't show that, would we have still virtual practices for athletics? So our athletic directors and high school principals have been working very hard to put protocols in place, and they've been working with our coaches to make sure strict protocols in place for every athletic activity, athletic and activity, sport and activity. And so I'm confident they have things in place. They've been working on that. Anytime, and throughout the summer, anytime there was an activity happening, each coach or leader of that activity had to submit a protocol sheet to Christine Lambert and Community Ed, and she reviewed all of them to make sure everything was placed that was needed. And that has gone well so far, and we will continue that with our fall sports and activities. But now, if I could get some informal consultation from you, if, as a school district, we are in distance learning, and we've chosen that as a school board or a school district, what is your input on athletics and activities being virtual only? Because that would be different from the guidance of the Minnesota State High School League.
So I guess, I mean, would this conversation come after? Conversation on, on how we're starting this program? Because I think it's hard to do that conversation right now. I guess some of my questions are, like, I have a question about transportation, because we get kids to these, does that last thing of only 50%? Would I assuming apply to sports teams as well?
Yes.
Okay. So when we're talking, like, because, because my opinion on what is going to come out is going to come out now, which is fine, because it's, you know, kind of a, so basically, my thought is, is following MDH guidelines. So if we're following MDH guidelines, then I think that we are right, because we're going to be following those anyway, so that it, there's conversation of the need to happen.
Right.
Because we're going to be following those guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what I said on this, because of the, but now, you and my thought would be different if we vote differently than, I can't say that we should go where that we can't have different classrooms. It's not going to say that we don't feel, we should have different classrooms, and we also sometimes get, if, um, should I, um, I'll say it falsely. If we, if the board decides that we don't feel, that we don't have kids in the classroom, then I feel that that would be the same for us. The big difference would be outside activities versus inside. So I think we need to look at the activities as well, say, swimming. Obviously, you're not really around as many people, tennis, the same thing, you're, you know, pretty far apart, usually, it's single tennis, I believe, right?
Yep.
Whereas soccer, my daughter's like, she's head-to-head with people, you know, for a long time sometimes. So I guess I would feel that maybe we should go into that realm of looking at what sports.
Looking at what sports it is if the board decides to go distance learning, but the state has not said that we have to be in distance learning.
Okay.
And now I get a mic after, and then speaking.
Does anyone else have comments?
So I, I think I agree with Katie in part, and then differ from her in part. I think if we vote to be in distance learning as a board, I think it's hard to say that it's, that it's unsafe to be in school, but that it's okay to be out doing school-based activities. And I'm not talking about, you know, club, club sports, or whatever that kids do on their own time with their own money. But I think that's something that, it becomes, I think it becomes hard to justify that if, if school is really not a place where children should congregate, where children need to, you know, and the purpose of a, of a school district is student education, then I think a lot of the extracurriculars, I mean, they're extracurriculars, and so they should, they should follow what we do for school. And so that's where I would differ, differ from Katie. I mean, soccer, you know, yeah, they're all up on each other, and tennis, they're far apart, but either they're, either, I think either they're, either they're in school or they're not in school.
I think if we go hybrid, and we don't have sports, then I agree with you that we shouldn't have, I mean, if we go hybrid or just distance learning, we should not have sports or clubs.
You're, you're saying if we have hybrid, which means they're in school part-time and distance part-time, we would not have sports?
Oh, no, that's not what I mean.
Okay.
If we, what I mean to say, and then I got confused, so. What I mean is, if we have hybrid, they're in school part-time, those kids who chose to go distance learning should still be able to participate in sports if they want to.
Yes.
That's my opinion.
Yes, and they can.
Okay.
Yeah, and I do want to clarify, actually, Pat reminded me, I do want to clarify, I think if children are in school hybrid, then they're in school, and thus, they can do activities. It's if, it's, I just think that if we make the affirmative decision that school is not safe, then everything around that, I think, should follow.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Reese, did you want to weigh in, or Melinda?
I, I see a lot of what Pat, what people are saying makes good sense to me. The only distinction I see between school being in session and a sport being in session is the number of people that are congregating. And so I'm, I'm processing that in terms of, it's a significantly lower number, which is one of the predictors.
I'm assuming, probably shouldn't assume, but that they would be distance learning if we're all on distant, I mean, not distance learning, but social distancing in the sport as much as they can, if we're just social distancing in school with the hybrid, when you have half as many kids, maybe you have half as many kids in that pod that you're practicing with and half as many over here. Try to keep it, I know, we're not having football, so that's a contact sport, right?
Right.
So, yeah, that's all taken care of. The one concern I have, well, I guess I'll wait till.
I think it would depend on whether or not we were deciding to temporarily do distance learning to give teachers more time to get things together type of thing, if we're kind of watching the numbers. I, I wouldn't see a problem with there being outdoor, social distance activities that could still take place, but if we were in a distance learning model because of MDH with the numbers, where we were at 50-plus, then I think it would be very unsafe to do any type of sports.
Well, I don't know if it's time to raise it or not, but I was very confused about what we voted on last week. We came with one thing and left with another. So I don't know if this is the right time or not, but I would like to get clarity on what it was that I voted for, rescind that motion, and get it, and clarify what it was, because I, I'm, I'm just not, I, you know, this decision with, with what she's talking about hinges upon that. And if I'm not clear what that was, how can I be clear with what that it was? So I'm sorry, but that's what I'm getting ready to say now, so.
Sure. Well, I guess, do you, I mean, if we're in distance learning, I would say we're in distance sports. I mean, that's just my. we're in distance sports. I mean, that's just my take on it. So is that what you needed for your?
Yes, yes. Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right, so now, but we can get into that, because we're going into action items. So 9.0 is our discussion items, which we don't have any this evening, so 10.0 are action items. And 10.1 is to talk about our fall learning model. So if you wanted to make a motion, you could do that now.
Well, that's what I want to do. I want to rescind that motion.
You can't rescind a motion that happened last meeting. You would just make a new motion for this meeting.
We have to rescind the vote first. So if you're motioning to rescind the vote from last week.
That's what I'm doing.
Or, sorry, Monday, the...
Third.
Third, then yeah, you can make a motion to rescind that vote for the fall learning model from August 3rd, yes.
Yes, that's what I'd like to do.
She didn't make the final motion, no, I did.
We just need somebody who voted affirmative.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Doesn't seem...
So if we have a motion, we would need a second to vote on that piece. So, oh.
Could you repeat the motion?
Yep. So we have a motion to rescind the vote from August 3rd, where we talked about the fall learning model, which was the MDA plus one. So I would second that motion. So we have conversation now about it. I mean, I know personally, and we've had a lot of emails and time to think about it, and honestly, I do believe we should go with MDA model. So I'm not comfortable, I don't feel I'm qualified to go beyond the science that has gone into making up that model. And knowing that we have weekly meeting with our COVID response team, with our epidemiologist, I have faith that we're going to make the right decisions for our kids based on the science, the information we have at the time, which I know we talked about. You can only make the best decision you can with the information you have at the time. So I absolutely support rescinding that vote from last time.
Yes, and I, I, I go along with the recommendations from the, from the epidemiologist or whoever. But the plus one is where I had problems. And I didn't really understand what it meant until after I started listening and listening to, you know, the community. And I just think that, you know, to follow the recommendations, we'll be fine.
All right. So any other comments on the rescinding the vote? Because that's what we'll be voting on.
Tracy, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So when we vote to, if we vote to rescind the vote from last time, then the next item that comes up will be somebody else, somebody's motion about what we need, what we do want to do, and then there would be a second, and then there would be discussion around that motion, and then that motion would get voted on. And then if that motion passes, then we're done. If it doesn't pass, then we continue to make motions about what we should do and, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, this is just giving us sort of a clean slate from where we were last time, or, yeah.
I, I have a question as well. Will there be two separate things? One, a decision-making model, and another on how we start the school year? Are those two things separate?
They are.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry. So I probably mis, misanswered your question. Okay. Pat, or Katie, or Melinda?
That was the same question I was going to have, would be, does that mean that we would be starting the school year at what MDA is recommending? So that would make a big difference in my vote.
No, this, right now, yeah, this is just, that's all this right now.
Thank you.
Yeah. So everybody feel comfortable with what we're going to be voting on? So, like I said, the motion is to rescind the vote from August 3rd regarding the fall learning model that we had voted on. All right. So, so I guess all in favor say aye if you want to rescind the vote.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Would you mind if I gave a little background, because we didn't start out in that?
Oh, yeah.
If it might be helpful.
Yeah.
Again, on...
And so, yeah, so we're going now to the, yeah.
So we're of a fresh slate. The state does require you to make a decision how we'll open school within two weeks. So that's why we're here tonight to make that decision. On the third, it was a decision-making model. What was difficult and, and questions that came from the public is it was a special board meeting, and in a special board meeting, you can't change the agenda at all. So we, when we looked at the decision-making model, if the data was stagnant, essentially that would have been the way we were opening school. But since the data is looked at every two weeks, it truly was a model, not the decision, but that's what got difficult in the conversation, because as you started talking, we were just moving away from the agenda. So in the clarification now, I want to just tell you where we are with data. So our data today, as of the 13th, and talking to Tara Goble, and she talks to MDA and our, Chris Keller, our epidemiologist in the county, every day. Right now, the number sits at 16.66. So on your board report and on the website, folks can see the different levels. So that's still firmly in that 10 to 19 range. So the recommendation is an in-person model for elementary and a hybrid for secondary. Now Tara's looked at the trend data, and they're going to look at that every two weeks. What the folks have said is that we are inching up in our county, and people have started to look at our city data and different data that's on the website. But there's a lot of different reasons. Woodbury is, it has higher rates, it's a more populated city, there's more assisted living homes that have different cases. So there's all sorts of things that epidemiologists look at. But they see that it is going up, but they're not sure that it's going to jump past this next level, or it may be in the next two weeks as we start school, it might be a little closer to 20, but they don't know for sure. So right now, you have to make, when you now start this discussion on how you want to open school, using that data and what, it's all speculation on where it might go before school started. So I just thought that was important, that you have an idea where we are today.
Yeah, no, absolutely. All right. So, so yes, so one piece at a time, our fall learning model. So does anyone want to make a motion on what should be the guidance for returning to school and any adjustments thereafter?
I see that we follow MDA model.
All right.
That's the very first thing.
Okay. So we have a motion by Sharon and a second by Simi to follow MDA model. All right. So do we have any conversation or questions or comments? Pat?
I would disagree with that motion. I'd vote no, because our trend data is at 16.66, and it's between 10 and 19. We're not that far from 19, and soon we will be going to hybrid for all students. Why risk it? I mean, why not just move now? Because we, we can do that. And I listened to the governor's speech that he did on the 30th again today, and he clearly states that he wants the board to make this decision, and he wants us to make it based on our data, our local data.
Our city.
Our cities, our county, and our building space, and all the things we've done. And I think what we have in place and what we, the, when our priority is safety, and if you put that as first, for our district, the safest thing for us to do right now is to go hybrid for everybody.
Okay, so we're not making the decision on how we go back.
Okay.
We're just making the decision on the guidance.
Totally sorry.
Nope, that's all right. So we're just talking about the guidance of how we will make the decision.
Okay.
But nope, that's...
Rewind.
Actually, tonight, though, you do make the decision.
We will make the decision, yes, after this, yeah.
So the only thing I would say about using that as a decision model is that I noticed in looking at the numbers today that Ramsey County and Dakota County are right next to us, and they both are trending about four or more cases higher per 10,000. And so I do wonder, and someone can, I'm sure, correct me, but I do wonder if it's worth factoring in surrounding counties or surrounding areas as part of our, you know, at least, not necessarily saying if the county surrounding us is doing X, then we must do Y, but just to be aware of what's going on surrounding us so that, you know, especially because, you know, Maplewood is not far away, Hastings is not far away, and that's where there's more, there's more of a presence of the disease than there is in Washington County. So that would be the only, I guess, maybe additional consideration to think about, but I, I don't even know what you, what you could do with that, because that would be for the COVID team with the epidemiologist to decide.
Yep. And as far as I know, the MDA guidance does not say to factor in additional, yeah. I mean, it wouldn't say, because they're, obviously, they're not in our county. So, I mean, I would presume not, but, and I don't know, if we're going to follow MDA guidelines, then that, you know, and it's not in there, they're breaking it up by county, I presume for a reason. So I don't think, I mean, if we, if we vote to follow MDA, that would not be factored in.
I have a suggestion.
Well, hang on just one second. Let's let everybody, let's, if you don't mind, I mean, I don't mean to cut you off. I, I'm sorry, I, somebody did that to me at a meeting, I apologize. But how about if we just hear one round first, and then we'll come back, if that's all right?
I do think what Simi said is important, even though it's not factored into the MDA guidelines, because if you look at Washington County, we're a very long, narrow county. And comparing our numbers to someplace like, for say, Forest Lake, that's way farther north than us, is going to look a lot different than comparing us with our surrounding counties that we're only, you know, 10, 15 minutes from, like Ramsey and Dakota. So it's something to at least pay attention to when we're looking at how, at least how we want to start.
And I do understand what you're saying, but if you take that same theory that Forest Lake is so far, well, part of Dakota County is also going to be just as far, or Ramsey County is going to be just as far. And we have teachers coming from Minneapolis, Anoka. I mean, are we going to start factoring in where every single teacher para custodian? I mean, where do we draw the line if we start doing it that way? Because then we have to factor, we have kids coming from St. Paul, Minne, I mean, we have kids coming from those counties too. So if we start looking at numbers in Dakota County and Ramsey County, because they touch our county, then we need to start looking at every county where any person that's coming into our district is coming from. So again, I think, I echo what Tracy said, if we're going to follow MDA guidelines, I don't think we should put caveats in there. I think we should follow MDA guidelines, or if that's not what we're going to do, then we need to come up with what we're going to do, but not, well, maybe we should, I think we need to be more firm on what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, so that we don't have what happened last meeting happening again.
And I do know they said there are some school districts that have different actual counties that come into it, and then they're supposed to take the higher numbers. But we don't have that, so we're all in one county, so they're telling us just to look at our numbers.
Yes. When I listened to Governor Walz, when he first brought out these numbers, the question actually came from the audience, what's the number, what's the number? And he was very cautious. He said, I don't even want to put the number out here right now, because that will become the primary focus. So I, I think it's important to remember, those numbers were put out as a baseline, and there is certainly the opportunity to be more restrictive. In addition to that baseline, there are additional metrics that Governor Walz said to take a look at. Certainly, one of them is staffing. Keith, I'm sure can answer that better than I can, but there's other metrics as well to be taken into account with this. So I, I want to be clear that this is not the only deciding factor, if the board adopts this exactly, that is still not the only deciding factor. There are other metrics that, that the state is saying, look at these as well.
Yeah, because this is 26 pages long. This is just one page of 26 pages. So, yes.
This much, this much of one page. But certainly, to be responsible, I think one of the metrics that we do need to look at is, are we, are our cases trending up? Are they stable, or are they trending down? I think that is an important metric to put in, to addition with that, to see, for example, the, the data update was 16 and 6,600, but the, the individual cases are available on the Washington County website, and that must have been August 1. That's of the date, end of August 1.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, so they've got additional cases by the day. If we take a look through August 8th, I, I did the math, and we're actually close to 18. So we still are seeing that trend up. It's been less, it was about two, it's getting to be about one. It corresponds about with the time of the mask order, which is maybe one factor. Again, there, there just are more factors than just that number.
Yep, for sure. All right, Pat, did you want?
I was going to suggest that because we're in this situation where, you know, 18, I believe your number more than the 16.66.
It's, it's just a difference, the next shift.
Right. But maybe the guidance, if we need to put guidance in there for Julie, I'm not sure about that, but I think, when she's working with a team like that, I'm not sure we need it, but if we want to put a guidance, rather than what we did with the one, a point five might be, I mean, it gets us what...
So that's actually our next discussion.
Oh, still again.
Yeah.
So clarification on this motion.
Yeah.
If you vote yes, you're saying we would open under the guidelines. Now, that would be the base, and so unless you can't do that or the other factors, this is how it'd be opened. If you don't agree with that, then you'd vote no on this motion, and then you would go into what, what way do you want to open? So this truly is about how you want to open, not just the decision-making model. So it's a yes or no, we want to keep it a very clean one question, not getting other things in, and then go to the next one.
Okay.
So a vote yes means we would follow MDA guidelines, we already have them here, and we would be done. That's how we'd open, Julie would work with, moving forward with MDA to see the other factors that you do consider, and would it look exactly like that, or would there be any alteration? If you don't want to do that, and there's, there's concerns that you want to look further, because one of the things MDA has guided is, we want to stay open as much as possible. If there's a model we can get into and go as long as we can. And so if you feel that that's, you're not comfortable with what that model is in the, up to the 10 to 20, then this would be a no vote, and you'd bring the next proposal forward.
Okay, so I thought when we started this, that Tracy said that this was only for the model, and then we would take another vote, because that's when Pat started talking about how we would open. That's when we stopped that conversa, or that, because then we would decide on how we're, the model, which is what we decided on the Monday, and then after that decision, we would decide on how we open.
Right. The model that we were looking at on Monday was, do you want to be more restrictive or less restrictive, or follow MDA? And we didn't have the data that we needed for today. Now you have the data two weeks out that you're supposed to think about on how you want to open school. So to, right now is a decision on how you want to ma, open school, not just the model. This is more than a model tonight, if you're saying follow MDA. We already know, then when you say yes to this, then we're off and running. And we'll look at this and we'll go. If you're not comfortable with this, with what people are saying, then you'd want to vote this motion down.
Okay, so I guess I was confused too.
I'm confused again.
The motion that Katie made was a motion about the model.
The motion Sharon.
Or Sharon made, sorry. The motion that Sharon made was a motion about the model. It wasn't a motion about starting school this fall.
So we're just going to vote for the model right now.
Okay. But I guess in essence, which is what I was wondering too, but I have it down here when we talked earlier, that we were splitting them up, so.
Let's, let's just do it, let's just make it clear.
I need that clarified.
I know. I agree.
So that's what, yeah, I think it's important to clarify this, because is this the model that Julie, you know, I, I'm thinking about this, this is the model that Julie will use on September, whatever, when she's at her first gate to decide...
on September, whatever, when she's at her first gate, to decide, you know, what, to look at what the numbers look like, and then, you know, in consultation, decide what, what the decision is. I, I was not thinking that this is how we are going to actually start the year, that that's a separate discussion.
Yeah, I guess, I thought that was the way we were doing it as well. So I guess if I, if I messed up, I apologize, but I thought.
Julie, you have to make a decision on how.
Yep, no, for sure. But I was, yeah, so this, this resolution that we were looking at, though, I thought was, you know, we're going to follow the MDH model and, you know, give the superintendent, you know, the authority to, you know, change as needed based on the meetings they have weekly. But if there was any difference to opening, that would have been a separate. To me, it seems like it was supposed to have been separate.
So then should we just withdraw this, talk about how we want to open, and then talk about the model, if it's going to be different?
Yeah, I just, I don't know, that's what I'm.
You know, I just think we should, we should be very clear about what it is that we want to accomplish with each of these motions.
It seems like they should be reversed.
I would agree.
As far as the motions, yeah. As far as deciding how we want to start, and then deciding if we're going to, after that point, go with the MDH model.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, because I, like I said, I think, I do think that that makes sense. So, so if Sharon, so I mean, Sharon had made the motion initially, so do you want to withdraw for right now, and then we'll get into the actual, how do you want to start school?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, and then we'll come back to it, because that'll be what we would be following moving forward with the guidance that Julie would have the authority. Okay. All right, apologies for that. Like I said, we had talked about it in advance, and that's how it felt, right, but tonight, that doesn't feel right. So we will move on to how we want to open. So do we have a motion from anyone on how you would like to start the school year?
Can we, are we able to have a discussion so that we can make one motion with, say, this is how we're going to open, and then we will follow MDH guidelines? And it would be one fluid motion? That would be, we want to start, say, hybrid, and then at that first touch point, Julie would follow MDH guidelines?
I like that.
If people are comfortable with that, we can.
I'd rather see two motions to make it clear.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's, it's clearer for the public, and I think it's also clearer for us in discussing it. But, and we can't have a discussion unless there is a motion on the table, correct?
Technically, yes, we do.
So we can't just, like, talk about what.
We would need to make a motion, yeah.
Okay.
Technically, I mean, technically, we've done it both ways in the past, but.
Part of it seems like it might just be easier to, for everyone to kind of just have a discussion and then someone make a motion, but I.
Yeah, and the, it's not really a discussion prior, it's basically information, just, you know, just to support the motion that's being proposed, and then we have the discussion to support whether or not you want to vote for it. So we really do need to have.
So I'll make a motion that we start the school year in hybrid.
All right, so we have.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion to start in hybrid and a second. So now we need discussion before we vote.
Well, I can go since I made the motion. So my thinking with starting in hybrid is based on, this is a new situation for everybody. Nobody knows what it's going to look like when these kids walk into the classroom. Some of these kids may have never worn a mask yet, until that first day they walk into a classroom. And I can't see a kindergarten teacher being able to keep a mask on 25 five-year-olds that may have never worn a mask before, whereas if you're talking 10 to 12 kid, five-year-olds, it will be easier for that teacher. Plus, it's easier for them to explain to these kids, this is how you sit, this is how you have to be spaced out, and have that for potentially three weeks before, if we would go all in, these kids would be used to not being able to hug their friend, or high-five, or do those things that have become so normal, or hug the teacher. You know, it's easier for a teacher to say, oh, no, we can't do that with 10, 12 kids than it is 25 over and over and over again all day long. So I'm looking at it more of a, it's easier for us to teach these kids those types of new behaviors with less kids in the classroom in the beginning, and then we can go forward once they are in their new normal for however long it has to be.
I agree, and I'll just shortly summarize what I said before. We started this out with our number one priority being safety, and this is the safest model. It really is for us to do right now. It's safer than all going in. I'm really concerned about the buses, though, at 50%. I don't think that's safe, that's just, might be part of this decision. But anyway, and I think it's, they still have the option to do distance learning if they're not comfortable. I like that idea, too, and I think, and like I said, the governor wants us to make this decision, not, you know, and based on fact, we've done all that work, we know we're trending upward, we're almost there. It's, it's the smartest move, I think, as well as the safest.
I have a question. If we do start in hybrid for our elementary school students, how will stuff like Kids Club operate? Because a lot of our parents are used to keeping their kids in Kids Club, you know, five days a week, and if their kid is only in school two days a week, how will that, how will that work?
Bob, would you mind answering?
Sorry, I'm sitting here with the mic.
So actually, later this evening or tomorrow, we'll put out a survey to find out what kind of childcare needs parents have. The executive order does require us to provide care during the school day for all Tier One essential workers. We, in the spring, did open that up to Tiers Two and Three and other community members as well, so it'll depend on capacity, but we would offer non-schoolday care on those off days for kids who are in hybrid, and then before and after school care, traditional Kids Club each of those days as well. So we will offer care, the capacity is the question right now, and we won't know that until we give parents a chance to indicate that they need care.
Do we know what that means in terms of, like, germ co-mingling, or whatever you'd call it, if they're in school two days a week, and so they've got all the germs from their, you know, 12 little friends, and then they go to a daycare, and is that, do we know, is that riskier, or, or not riskier, or the same risk as being with the same, being with 25 kids for four days?
I would, I would say, and I don't know the answer to that, but you're right, we would have kids that are potentially in a cohort of students in their classroom all day, and then go into a learning environment, or a care environment that would be a new cohort of kids, and that could be different before or after. We would do our best to keep grade levels or classmates together, but we run right now a nine-to-one ratio based on MDH guidelines, and so we would still have pods of kids in the care program, but they would be a different pod than they were with all day during class on their A-day or B-day, correct? So it would be more mixing. It would be expanding the bubble, is what Julie's saying. So their bubble in the K-5 classroom might be 20 kids or 18 kids in their classroom. Their new bubble would now expand to whichever kids there in that cohort of nine or 12 in their care.
But I'm talking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the off days where they're not, you know, because a lot of, a lot of families aren't going to work, or aren't staying, aren't able to work from home, and so these kids are going to have to go to, like, Kindergarten or the Y, or someplace like that if they're not in school. So what does, what I'm curious about is if you're in this expanded bubble on Mondays and Wednesdays, what does your Tuesday, Thursday, Friday look like? And then, I guess also logistically, just thinking about how, how the education piece of it would work with parents, if, if I work at, you know, like, wherever, I work at a grocery store, and so I have to be at work from 7:00 to 3:00 every day, or 7:00 to 4:00 every day, and so my kid is, is in care, and then I have to come home, and presumably, when they've been in care, they haven't been doing their work.
So we provide distance learning support during emergency care, we did in the spring, and so we would do that as well. So they would be able to complete their distance learning assignments on their off day during a care model that's offered through the school. I can't talk to the YMCA or to Kindergarten or to other providers. I know there are some providers in town who have told their parents that they need to choose virtual only because they don't want kids coming to their care center who are going to school every other day. So I believe some parents made the choice for Virtual Learning Academy based on that, but we would have kids who would, you're right, on Monday, they might be in A group, Tuesday, they might be in care with a new group of kids, and then back in their A group on Wednesday. And if we knew how many kids that would be, and we can keep kids together the best we can, we can try that, but there's no guarantee that that, we won't have the same cohort or bubble of kids on Monday that, that need care on Tuesday. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and so, and the care that would be provided is just to Tier One, children of Tier One workers.
It's required that we provide it to children of Tier One workers, but like I said, in the spring, we did expand that because we had the capacity. So once we find out what the need is, we would expand that as we're able to, to provide it for any parents who need that care.
So if I'm, so I'm not a Tier One worker, right? So if I have a kid who needs care, so what you're saying is that there is the possibility that my child would be coming to school anyway, or I would have the opportunity for my child to have all-day Kids Club on their non-hybrid, non-in-class hybrid days?
You would potentially, again, until we know the numbers, because we have space and staffing limitations, but potentially, if you're not a Tier One worker, or if you are a Tier One worker, it wouldn't matter, you could send your kids to Kids Club in the morning, starting at 6:30. They would then go to their learning day, and then come back to Kids Club on their A-day. B-day, it would be the emergency care in the midday, and then Kids Club before and after. So yes, they could come for that full day on B-day as well.
Can I, just a follow-up to that. Where are these Kids Clubs? Because I can't imagine there's room in the elementary school for those kids.
And we don't have that determined yet because we don't know numbers. If it's 200 kids like it was in the spring, then it would look very different than if it's 2,000 kids. And so until we know those numbers, then we would determine the logistics around it. But based on the governor's executive order, it will be provided during the school day for Tier One emergent or essential workers. But where it is, we would ideally be in the schools. If not, we would work with community partners who have space during the day during the week.
And then, when we were talking about the pods, so even if we went all in, you could potentially still be from 6:30 in the morning until school starts at 8:30 with a different set of kids, just like then after school.
Correct, so if you use, correct, so if you use before and after school care on your A-day, which was your learning day, you could go in with a group of kids for care in a group of cohort. Right now, it's a one-to-nine ratio, it could go up, and Department of Human Services allows for a one-to-15 ratio, but they could be with a group of kids in the morning, then go to their class, and then a different group of kids after school, because not all kids who come in the morning also come after school. But you're right, it could be up to three cohorts in a single day.
So I mean, even going all in, we don't eliminate those, and we have kids transferring from the Kids Club, or the tutor times and whatever, coming to school, too.
Correct, so we have kids who have all sorts of care arrangements before and after school, yeah.
Okay.
Ah, gee, Sharon and Melinda.
Melinda. Nothing? Louise has either.
I'm going with the hybrid model, with the option of distant learning.
Hybrid to start?
Yeah.
First trimester, or, I mean, is that what you had?
Mine was just to start and then.
Start.
Do we would make the recommendation at the next touch point?
Yeah, that's it.
I would be okay, starting off in the hybrid model, just, I think it's the closest thing we have right now to try to make everybody in the community, I guess not happy, but less upset, as far as that way we have experiences that, parents that really want their children to be in school, kids that really need that due to special needs, or anything else where they really need to be in school, has an opportunity for children to be able to meet their teachers more, and that way our classes can be half-capacity and make things safer for our students and our teachers. So, and then we still have the families that are able to choose the virtual, which they already have, but this, since teachers don't have that ability to choose like families do, it helps make things safer for our teachers as well, since they're only dealing with the half-capacity then, at first. So, and with the statistics climbing with our numbers, the data looks like we are likely going to be projected to be at that 19-point number or higher by the time school would be starting anyways. So I know as a parent, if I still had elementary-age children, I would rather be able to plan for that childcare now than thinking that they'd be going back full-time and then being told that can't happen. So I just think it's the, the best route to start right now.
And that's, I would say that's my big concern with the MDH guidelines, is that depending on where our numbers end up, if our numbers, say, if our numbers kept going from like 18 to 22 and back and forth, I think that could cause some childcare instability for parents. And so my preference would be, and I guess this is me telling you, Julie, my preference would be that, like, if the, if the numbers are variable, but they're variable in a, in a small enough range, that we try to create as much stability for parents as possible, because I don't want to be, you know, like, okay, your kids go five days a week, oh, wait, a month later, your kids are going two days a week, oh, wait, a month later, your kids are going five days a week. I think it's a lot to expect.
I think you make a good point, Simi, not just for parents, but for students. To have that stability is a, is a safety.
Yes.
To students as well.
Yeah.
So I guess, my thought really is to follow MDH, and you know, I was looking at our calendar coming up, and I wonder if, so we got the four days that are transition days, and I wonder if, you know, we just use maybe even the first couple, two, three weeks, which I suppose in the motion could be it, right? To use that as transition time, and then an additional time to watch the numbers. So.
And that is one of the questions I've been getting from a lot of parents, is, like, apparently, a lot of other school districts are doing kind of, you start, you ramp up sort of approach, or, and so, asking if that's something that we would consider. I, what would, what's the first gate, the first day that we would be looking to potentially change?
If I'm doing my math right, it would be the 27.
Mm-hmm.
Because isn't it on Thursdays, not Fridays? Because it came out today with 16.6, right?
Right.
Yeah. Just asking, the motion's on the table, right, to start in a hybrid?
Yes.
You want to, let's just, you want to come back to that one and then start to decide, are you going to do that, or are you going to change the motion in the middle? Because it feels like you're starting to look at drifting into saying, we'll start hybrid, but maybe we'll do a softer hybrid.
Well, so it wasn't specific, she just said start hybrid. So I guess in that realm, I was just saying, it's possible then that we could just start the first couple weeks, and then whatever's happening, leave it up to Julie. So Julie, I guess I'm curious to know what your thoughts are, because you're going to have to, like, make this happen, so.
I thought you were saying you wanted to start different than the hybrid, a few, first couple weeks, then go to that.
Nope.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we're getting off, though, more into our model with having Julie talk about what she wants to do. When my motion was just how we're going to start school, not, so.
You want to go back to the model?
So I, I think if we, if we start talking now about how we're going to, what we're going to do after that first touch point on, or the, on the 27th, we need to vote on this first and then start talking, or then make a motion and start talking then, because otherwise, we're going down that rabbit hole again.
Yeah.
Where we're going to start talking about eight million different things again, and not know what we're actually voting on.
Okay, so the motion was just to start school in hybrid.
Can I ask one quick clarifying question, and I don't know if this would be to Julie or to Keith, but realistically, if our school is supposed to be starting on September 8th for, would, that would be when hybrid would begin, are we going to be realistically ready for that at that point?
Well, the struggle we're having is secondary schedules, but we're.
Well, the struggle we're having is secondary schedules, but we're working through that. And our schedules, folks are working day and night on that. The elementary, Julie, I'd let you...
Yeah, I think the, probably the biggest concern right now are some of the staffing concerns and movement of teachers because we're going to need to do that to support the Virtual Learning Academy, to support the needs of all staff who can't return in person. And so those are some of the logistics we're still working through. I would anticipate, knowing that there has been a lot of the heavy lifting and now it's just taking the information and implementing it and taking what we know and implementing it, that by the 8th, we would be prepared, as you talked about hybrid.
Thank you.
But it is pending some of the staffing things and working through those, those pieces.
Julie, do teachers have the option of doing virtual or in-class?
Teachers don't necessarily have the option. They can submit a request, and this is Kevin's arena. They can submit a request if they have a medical reason that they can't be back. Human Resources is working with all of the employee groups. And we just received a list of staff members who were approved, some that are pending and some that are pending doctor's notes yet. And so as part of the requirement, we are asking for doctor's notes from staff members.
So I know right now we have about 10% of staff that fit in that high-risk category that have requested that with the doctor's notes. And if we are going to be starting at the hybrid model, meaning we'd only have 50% capacity of students, what would the next step be as far as, since we have about 25%, a little bit less than that, of families that have signed up for the Virtual Learning Academy? Would we then go on to teachers that are in the moderate-risk category if they request to do the, the virtual learning? Or would it be some type of lottery?
I think, I think we're kind of getting off task a little bit. And you all can clarify if you think I'm off-base. But, so we just need to decide about how we open. And then the staffing piece, it's something I think that administration will have to work on after we decide. And so, I mean, we can certainly ask questions about that at another time. But I think at this particular moment, we need to stick with talking about the opening of school. Yeah, I, I hope I'm not getting off-base, but...
I did have a logistical question about how hybrid. Is there any, I'm fairly certain I know the answer to this, but is there any difference that you would see, like, in terms of educational quality or educational outcomes for kids who are going, if we went straight MDH guidelines where kids would be, elementary kids would be there five days a week versus the hybrid format? Or do you think that generally speaking, you know, everything is going to end up being roughly equivalent?
I think in terms of what the expectations are, we really worked hard to make sure that as we thought about flowing in and out of in-person to hybrid to distance learning, that it was quite seamless. When we go from hybrid, especially at the elementary, to in-person, really the one thing that changes is the social distancing and the requirements around that. We would not change the setup of the pods and how teachers are with certain groups of kids. We wouldn't change specialists rotating into groups so that they don't see 250 students every day. So most of the things that exist in hybrid, if we slid that to an in-person, would exist. I think someone brought up just the point of just the sheer numbers of students as we're trying to get things up and going. Makes it difficult to teach and model and to train and support students as you're implementing those. But much of the practice and how we're operating, you know, the cafeteria would still look the same. And so we'd have to figure out what kind of space we need, how many more lunch shifts we need.
Do you anticipate with the, so I had a couple parents email and ask about things like learning differences or something that were discovered because of teachers being in close proximity to students. And do you think in a hybrid format, or like early readers, for example?
I think we are getting off, I'm sorry. We're kind of debating hybrid and...
Well, I'm just trying to debate, I'm trying, what I'm trying to decide is hybrid versus MDH guidelines. And understanding if there's a different edu, how meaningfully different the educational experience is for those younger students in hybrid versus following the MDH guidelines.
Because then that would change your vote. I mean, you would change back, so you would vote no to hybrid to start. I guess I just...
Depending on what the answer is, yes.
Okay, so if, yeah, if it's relevant to the vote, then I think we should keep moving on. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, I know we got off-track, so I apologize, I don't mean to be harsh. I just want us to stay on track if possible, so, okay. If it, yes, if it's relevant to the vote, then...
So my, my, my concern is just, is there, do we think that there's going to be less opportunities for those types of interactions in a hybrid model versus going through the MDH model? Or is there, or, or do we think that how, cutting the number of students in half would then, you don't need, you don't need twice as many days when you cut the number of students in half?
I think when we think about the interactions and relationships with students, it's going to look different no matter which scenario that we're in. It's just not going to be the same. I think the kids, whether you're in-person, even the social distancing guidelines are lightened. It's just not going to be the same. And I think that was something that we really worked hard on to make sure that we were really able to flow in and out without having to adjust groups of kids. You know, we weren't resorting back to having just a homeroom teacher and then the kids moving everywhere. That, we were still intentional. You know, when we think of some of our larger elementary classes upwards of 30 students, that's a lot of students when kids are coming back after being gone for three months and then trying to transition them into a school year where we know that the training is so critical upfront and we have to train and model. And when you have 30, that, in 30 with only two hands and two eyes, it's a lot.
Okay.
So, yeah, looking at the calendar and knowing that we have four days for the transition and for, you know, getting the kids up to, you know, with all the training with the COVID protocols and things of that nature, I would, I still support going with the MDH model. I honestly, like I said, I just, I trust that the data that we're getting, that the administration and our COVID response team will take that obviously very seriously and make any adjustments that need to be. But where we stand right now, and I said imperfect information, but the information we have right now that's provided by the health experts tell us that we can start in-person elementary, hybrid secondary. So I guess I won't be supporting the motion because I think we should follow MDH guidelines as they're outlined. With the, like I said, with the days that we have in a vote coming up to transition the kids. So anyone else comment? Obviously, this is a pretty big vote, so everyone feels comfortable. They've had questions on the hybrid model because that's what we'll be voting on to begin the school year with hybrid model. All right, so seeing no other questions. We, we need to vote on, the motion on the floor is to begin the school year in a hybrid model. So, do we want to do a roll call, just so we know where we are? Why don't we do a roll call?
Melinda Dulles?
Yes.
Louise Heinz?
Yes.
Simi Patnayak?
Yes.
Pat Driscoll?
Yes.
Sharon Van Leer?
Yeah.
Katie Schwartz?
Yes.
Tracy Burnett?
No. All right, motion passes. So, so then we will move on to the model that will make the decisions moving forward. So does anyone want to make a motion there?
I would like to make a clarifying comment just because, so that, the next touch point is the 27th, am I correct? Because they come out on Thursdays, not Friday. Because if we actually go by your recommendation on that day, we would start school under a different model possibly. Because we have to give the parents a one-week notice, which means that we would make the change this, on the 8th. So I think... Right. Okay. Okay. Okay, because are all students in buildings though as of the 31st? Or what is the first day that all kids will be in the building? Okay.
Is your question, Katie, when might the model change?
Yes, because the model would technically change starting September 8th. We would go by, so technically going by the new calendar, the first day that all kids are in school, going by the first calendar, could end up being in-person if the numbers change based on what we're saying. Because the first technical day of school is the 31st.
The 31st through the 3rd is, yep, the transition days.
And so I guess I would ask the board to think about, you know, there was a calendar shared earlier.
Yes.
That we can adjust that calendar. So you're right, Katie, the data's coming out now on Thursdays. And so all we have to redo is look at those dates. And then we will plan our meetings accordingly so that we can review data.
I think the date, say, shared last time was like September 21st or 25th or something like that, correct?
The 21st is a Monday, so 25th of September?
I think so, I think that was the date that the, that there was the meeting. And so...
It was the 2, the first, was the September 11th. So Friday, September 11th. And then if we had to change models, we would look at shifting on the 21st. And then we would have a shift and then we would go until the 2nd where we would check in. And then a possible change models on the 12th. So throughout that trimester, we had one, two, we had three, three different opportunities to review the data and make any change.
But we won't be reviewing it on the 27th?
As of right now, the way that we had the hybrid learning calendar, that's the date we set out. But again, if you decide you want to make that adjustment, we would just, I would just need to know that in making a decision.
No, I just wanted to make sure as we go with this, the motion that I was planning on making, that that first touch point was actually after the kids because we don't want to come back here on the 28th and do this all over again. I don't want to come back here on the 27th or 28th and do this all over. Come back here, sure, but not to talk about this. Okay, so with that clarification, my motion is that we will, starting with the first touch point, go with the MDH guidelines and that our superintendent will be making those decisions going forward. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so move by Katie, second by Sharon.
Katie, were we going to adjust those dates to accommodate the Thursday? Or keep those right where they're at?
Can you actually give the date?
Yes, sure. In September, the 11th is...
Okay, so that, but that's the first touch point?
Correct.
Okay, September 11th, so that's what we need. So follow MDH guidelines at, starting with 9/11?
Yes.
Do the numbers come out on Thursday or Friday?
I think they come out on Thursday.
Thursday.
We got them to, or yesterday.
That's what I thought, so should we, I mean, that gives parents an extra weekend and, I mean, I think it's...
So the thinking was this, because we did think about that, Katie, is that if we use the 11th of Friday, we would have morning meetings, we'd bring the data. We would be able to communicate before the close of the day, so that would give families the weekend. The next week and then that Monday, the 21st, is when there would be a potential scenario change. Not guaranteed, but a potential scenario change.
Because I suppose the numbers don't come out like 8 o'clock in the morning. I mean, they come out at some point on Thursday. Not, okay. Yeah, I'm fine with the date staying the same. I was just curious, for my own curiosity, what day the numbers came.
And really, we're just going to be one day off from when they come out. So the review dates would be September 11th, October 2nd, and October 30th. Potential scenario change, if nothing too drastic happened, would be then the 21st of September, the 12th of October, and the 9th of November. That would get us through first trimester. On November 13th, right before we close out first trimester, we would have another case review that would roll us into second trimester. But remember, the structures have been built so that we can flow in and out even within a trimester.
So I guess, and the only reason I asked for a date is that, so we could have the motion as clear. Okay. All right, so we have a motion to follow MDH guidelines, starting with the first touch point on 9/10?
11.
11.
9/11, okay, 9/11. All right, so questions, comments about the motion?
I just have a comment, again, it's not based on only the numbers. It's based on current situation and all the factors that go into that, space, staff, all of those things.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
And that whole team.
Yeah, the team includes...
Louise? I, I would add, when our parents are making decisions for the Virtual Learning Academy, the other choice is whichever model we're in. And so there's that need to be ready to flow from one to another. That being said, back to a comment Simi made earlier, some stability for our families, I think will be really important if we're shifting, you know, if we're shifting back and forth between two. The idea of changing my childcare every three weeks, the idea, I think that is a burden on families. And I also believe that's a burden on our students. The idea of having some continuity provides safety, a feeling of safety and security for our students as well.
And I think you can rest assured that that, Julie, would be taking that with the team in consideration best for the students and the families as we go through. And, and that, as you said, it's not just the number, there's other factors to be considered and, and working through. So those are all good points, and I would guess, and I mean, Julie, you obviously can speak for yourself, but I think that's all the things that we would be definitely talking about, or she would definitely be talking about.
I think while the final decision is left up to me, there's a team that I'll be working with. That certainly, their input is very valued.
Anyone else have questions, comments?
I just was going to ask Julie if it would be helpful to put some leeway in there, a .5 discretion.
Um, then, so that's not the motion?
Okay, never mind, that's right.
I mean, they can make the best decision they have.
Right.
Yeah, so they, I think, kind of have that.
Okay, we have a motion. I think we have the motion, are you ready for the?
Melinda or Sharon? All right, so in this case, we do have a resolution that we will fill in our information. So do I need to read the whole thing?
No.
Okay. So in essence, the, the resolution was provided by MSBA. And so obviously, we amended it for our district. And the piece, of course, that will be relevant for us is that, based on our collective consideration of all these factors, so of course, it's the governor's, the governor's safe learning... of all these factors, so of course, it's the governor's, the governor's Safe Learning Plan, the MD guidance, the MDH guidance, that we are, the school board recommends that we are starting the year in hybrid, and that our MDH guidelines will be the base learning model, moving forward with the first touch point of 9/11, and that the superintendent is directed to implement that base learning model to open the school year, and then the MDH to make any changes that need to be made moving forward. So, I mean, and the base, of course, right now, we're voting on, after we've already opened school, we're going to follow MDH guidelines until the first, starting at the first touch point of 9/11. So at this point, we can vote. I suppose we should do a, since it was a resolution, we should probably do a roll-call vote for this as well.
Melinda Dole?
Yes.
Louise Hines?
No.
Simi Patnag?
Yes.
Pat Driscoll?
Yes.
Sharon Van Leer?
Yes.
Katie Schwartz?
Yes.
Tracy Brunette?
Yes. All right, motion passes. So you have what you need. Hopefully, that was clearer. Lots of really great discussion, though. Appreciate everyone's concern, everyone's questions and comments. This is clearly not an easy decision. All of us care about the safety of our employees and our students. As we kind of talked about before, we honestly have to rely on the data we have at the time, and we just have to make the best decision we can, and trust that we've done. And, I mean, we've heard all of the work that has gone into trying to keep everyone safe, and, you know, we can only do our best, and I think that we absolutely are, and we have an amazing team that will make sure that we do everything we can. So, thank you, everybody. I know it's not easy, but appreciate all your thoughts and discussions, so. All right, so we can move on. So something a little lighter, we have 10.2 that is approving an MOU for our DOS, and we are going to have Dan Pyon present.
Good evening again, board. One of the employee bargaining units in the district is the District Office Support Specialist, they're known as DOS. A two-year contract was negotiated in June for this next two years, and it was approved by the board on both parties. It was discovered in the implementation of the contract that they had negotiated for a term of period that was before the contract, and we revised that you can't go back on that, or wasn't, it wasn't recommended to do that. So we took this memorandum of agreement will not cost any more than what the contract was costed at, because we just took the amount that we cannot give them from June to July and put that into future years. It's somewhat difficult to explain, and I probably didn't do a very good job of it, but they had negotiated benefits from January of 2020 to June 30th of 2020. The contract does not start till July 1st of 2020. So we had already, we were already accounted for that in our costing, we just took those amounts and put them into future years for health insurance. The amounts on the back in the agreement are the amounts that would be contributed to the health insurance premiums for these employees, and includes the amounts that they had negotiated for the six months that did not apply. And in general, we also had to change one line in the contributions, we did not increase the amount, but changed one line in the contributions for tax sheltered annuities, because the contracts said that had to be paid in 12, or 24 equal installments. Well, once they negotiate a calendar year, and it's too late to get those 24 installments, it's only fair that if they match it, that we match it up until the end of the calendar year. So with that, I will take any questions, but we're just, we renegotiated a memorandum just so that we could catch everybody up to properly to what was actually negotiated.
All right, so we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Katie, second by Pat, I believe, was first. I don't know. That's, I came from that direction. All right, any questions, comments on this?
So Dan, you say this is budget neutral?
Yes, it was the amount that was costed, it was just in the wrong period of time.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
10.3 is the approval of a contract with our new health insurance carrier and our Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, good evening. The Health Insurance Transparency Act, or HITA, requires that all school districts must make requests for proposals at least 150 days prior to the expiration of existing health, existing contract for health insurance, but not more than once every 24 months. The district contracts with, contracts with Preferred One expires on December 31st, 2020. Thus, the district administration worked with our health consultants Gallagher Benefits Services to advertise and receive responses to requests for proposal from seven health vendors. Those include Preferred One, Medica, Peep, Health Partners, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota, Alina, Aetna, and United Healthcare. The initial proposals were opened on June 5th, 2020, in the presence of three teacher union representatives, with six of the seven vendors providing both fully insured proposals, and four of the seven vendors providing self-insured proposals. The district then asked Gallagher or Benefits Services to request best and final options, final proposals from the six vendors, and four of the six responded with second quotes. Peep and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota sent its original proposals as their finals. So the best and final proposals were opened by the district on June 12th, 2020. Health Partners was clearly the best option in terms of both services and cost for the district, with a 4.4% aggregate increase rates effective January 1st, 2021, and a maximum of 10% rate cap increase January 1st, 2022. Health Partners is not new to the district, we moved to Preferred One for the last two years, and so we've been moving back very seamlessly to Health Partners. Administration recommends approval of the Health Partners two-year contract of health insurance from 2021 to 2022.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the new health insurance.
So moved.
For a second.
Okay, sorry, who said?
It's Louise.
Louise, okay. All right, moved by Louise, second by Katie. Any questions, comments?
How is, how does the rate in our, what we're paying for health insurance, like, how does that, how is that in line with how health insurance rates are going up overall? We'll just start there, and then I.
I don't know the rates are overall, but I know that a 4% increase, 4.4% increase is a really good increase.
And then how does this fit in with what we had budgeted out over the various contracts we've been signing with different groups?
Dan will have to help me with that one.
The 4.4 aggregate, I believe it was, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that, that falls within what we had budgeted for the single increase. The amounts on the health, on the families, the employees contributed some of those dollars too, but as far as we know, for the first year, it's about in. The other contracts really don't, some of the contracts don't include the second year yet, so we'll have to see what happens there.
And then, this is still not a self-insured option, correct?
Correct.
This is fully insured, and there's an option, they're aware that we may explore self-insured during the second year.
Okay.
Yes.
Anyone else? All right, we will, those in favor of approving our new health insurance carrier, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
10.4 is the approval of policy 808 COVID-19 face.
Good evening, policy 808 is new. The COVID-19 face covering policy is being brought forward this evening for review, and we are asking for approval. The Governor's Emergency Executive Order 20-81 requires Minnesotans to wear face covering in certain settings and circumstances, including in various school settings. Emergency Executive Order 20-82 states that all Minnesota public schools must adhere to parameters determined by Minnesota Department of Health in implementing or shifting between in-person learning, hybrid learning, or distance learning. The provisions of this policy reflect the requirements of the 2020-2021 Planning Guide for Schools, and Executive Order 2081, and Executive Order 20-82. Based on the safety of our staff and students, we are requesting that the board suspend the need for a second reading and approve this policy this evening. What I'd like to do, because it's a new policy for all of us, is just to walk through. And already, since the policy came out, and this is an MSBA model policy, and since the policy came out, there have already been some adjustments. And so what I'd like to see happen is that we would approve this evening, and at the next board meeting, we would make some of those changes, and then do a final approval. But it would allow us then to communicate the fact that we have a COVID-19 mask policy in place. I will let you go ahead and read the purpose, the definition, just thinking about a lot of questions we've gotten, exceptions and alternatives, temporary removal of face coverings. And so under that area, I believe as it relates to outside activities, it may get into some of our different productions outside, our music indoor practices, performances. Originally, in this model policy, it said six feet, and we received notification that that's 12 feet. And so we already know that that's going to be an adjustment to the policy. I was already receiving some feedback from parents and community members who already had seen that and noticed this policy. And so know that this is a base right now, but we already know that there are things being updated that we will have to revise at the next board meeting. The implementation, when you think about a policy, the implementation being one of the biggest priorities, making sure that it's posted, making sure that the school district, obviously, for students and staff, there are certain masks that are more comfortable, and if you wear glasses, there are masks that maybe don't fog up, but that the school district is obligated to provide for anyone who doesn't bring their owner doesn't have. That we would provide training, and I think I mentioned that earlier in terms of a protocol, watching some of the safety protocols, and how do you take off your mask, when do you sanitize your hands? And there was a lot of sanitizing, especially for someone who has glasses and taking it off, but making sure that you're not touching the outer part with germs. So knowing that part of this policy implementation requires training, and that we would make sure that we have alternative options for students, or another way to say it is that we are able to make accommodations. And I mentioned a couple of those for a student who may not be able to wear a mask like this, that they would have the opportunity to wear a shield, or also talk about the desk protectors that were clear, that would kind of keep anything in. Letter E. under implementation, that we just need to make sure that any face coverings follow the dress code and that they're appropriate. And lastly, to make sure that the school district, in terms of implementation for families who aren't comfortable with that, they also have the option of distance learning. And so with that, I would ask if there are any questions? And again, this is a new policy for all Minnesota school districts right now, and many are adopting, and they've adopted the model policy, and they'll go back and do some of the revisions with updates.
So, my question, I'm sorry, is if, I know I've been asked this, that there's a movement to try and rescind this order by the governor. If that should happen, we can still keep this policy and still enforce this policy even without having to have an executive order?
And Katie, that is my understanding, but we would probably need to check with legal just to double-check that. But I believe someone else asked me that, and we've had that conversation, that we would be able to keep something like this in place.
All right, thank you.
And I can certainly follow up with the board after this, Katie?
All right, thank you.
Will there, will there be any requirement to wear it properly? Like, I see some people wear, I mean, you can wear a face mask on your neck, but it doesn't do any good, right, so.
I do want to see, I think as part of the training, Pat, it includes wearing it properly. What we're not going to get fussy about, if you look at the first page, it talks about different types, scarves or neck gaiters, and I know some parents have asked, you know, are you going to allow this or that? And I think the purpose is that the nose and the mouth are covered.
Yes.
And Pat, the policy does actually say.
Oh, it does?
A face covering must be worn to cover the nose and mouth completely.
I thought it was in there, yeah, thank you.
Oh, good, thank you.
I looked for that right away.
I've just been looking for it.
Can you talk more about what, what the masking policy looks like in, like, high exertion activities, or high respiratory activities, like choir or gym?
And so right now, number four in the policy talks about exceptions and alternatives, temporary removal of face covering. And so in there, it outlines those areas, but as we talk about implementation, especially elementary and being able to go outside, that students would be able to take off their face covering. One thing we've heard a lot from our parents is that, I know how difficult it is to have a face mask on all the time, are kids and students going to have the opportunities to take it off at times? And the answer would be yes. But in those cases, we want to make sure that they're socially distanced appropriately or outside. I don't believe, and I didn't review it every detail, but that during exertion, again, as long as they're able to maintain social distancing, that the mask could be off.
So the only, the only, I guess, caution or thing that stays on my mind is, you know, if you've got a hybrid middle school choir, so there's, I don't know how many kids in middle school choir that day, but say 30 or 40 kids, and there's, I don't know if you can get the appropriate social distancing in the room, because I haven't seen the room, but I would worry, especially given, you know, I know one of the first cases came from Washington State where there was a choir, and then, you know, terrible things happened. I, I, it seems like a preventable issue, so I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not overlooking things that could be, that could become problematic.
Right, and those, number seven, actually, Simi talks about during indoor practices or performance involving singing, acting, public speaking. It talks about six feet, and it said it was adjusted to 12.
Oh, 12, okay, that's.
But I think Christine, at the secondary level, having conversations with band and choir, they're having those conversations, and we know at the elementary level right now that those are on pause, at least temporarily, until we can figure out how we can do that. In addition, it also means at the elementary level that students would be moving into a different bubble with different kids. And so that is one that we want to take a look at. Obviously, other Minnesota school districts have made some revisions already, but we will be revising that. But certainly a concern to have a choir and our bands. We do know that there's now a sleeve that can go over instruments, but that comes at a cost as well for students and families, so.
Julie, besides that thing that can go over for band, for choir, would it be a possibility to make it a little safer? I know it's hard to sing in a mask, you know, even though we could do more public speaking in a mask, but for singing, it would be difficult. But what about the possibility of having choir students have a face shield each when they're singing, without the mask?
Yeah, I would have to talk with the health experts, I am no health expert at all, well, slightly. But I, I think that's one of the biggest ways that I'm reading and seeing that it's transmitted, is just, you know, through saliva and spit, and so I think, I think choir presents a different challenge, band as well. But I guess I would go back and I would talk with our licensed school nurse, who is in close contact, about that option of wearing a shield. Somewhere, I'm thinking, Melinda, that I read that that was not the best option, in particular, when you have that many students, and it's really probably more about the students, if you could be socially distanced in one of our choir rooms, that would probably be okay, but if you think about the numbers in our choirs and our bands, it certainly exceeds what any one classroom should have in.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, even with the 12-foot rule, that that would give an extra protection, because, you know, with the aerosols, with saliva droplets going into the aerosol, they can even go past the 12 feet.
And those are some of the challenges that Christine is working through with her high school and middle school principals and leaders as we look at class offerings.
I don't know if we had a motion yet. I don't see that. So can I get a motion to approve policy 808? So can I get a motion to approve Policy 808?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Pat and second by Simi, all right. The other piece of this with policy is we ask for public comment if there is any, so I will ask at this moment. All right, see none. Any other questions, comments?
I did, I had one more, a couple more questions around the exemptions for mask wearing, and just, a lot of people have emailed with concerns that there will be either some sort of mask exemption movement, or that parents are going to try to game the system, or, you know. And so can you help clarify what mask exemptions would look like and for whom those are intended?
They may be for some of our higher-needs special education students, perhaps students that have experienced some sort of trauma and are not able to wear a mask. And I think the clarifying piece is that we're asking for a medical doctor to submit that note and that documentation, which is different than just anyone saying that, you know, my child can't wear a mask. And I think we saw that in our kids' club this summer with opting out, and we did hear some of that, that people were just, parents were signing off. And I think we want to make sure we take the next step to make sure that if we have this policy in place, that there are fewer exemptions, but we also want to make sure that we accommodate the students that need that.
Julie, since this policy is just going into place tonight, and the deadline for the Virtual Learning Academy was last week, if parents are adamant that they don't want their children to wear a mask, can they still opt for the other option, or is that over now?
Melinda, where we're at right now, because we're already moving forward with staffing and numbers, if they have that interest, many of them have already been calling our Student Information Department, and we are placing any other additional students or families on a waiting list. And, you know, as we kind of navigate students and placement, we will relook at that waiting list. But right now, because we hit that deadline, we have, we are closed, but we are still taking those names, and by all means, if it can work, we'll make it work. But if our sections are too big in terms of students and numbers, then we would not be able to say yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right, we have the approval of Policy 808. If we don't have any other questions, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and like you said, we will have some changes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 10.5, approval of wages and benefits for independent director of Finance and Operations.
Good evening again. I had this agenda set up so I could increase my steps tonight. South Watch County Schools employs about 110 employees classified as independent. These employees are given letters of assignment each year, and the school board assigned their wages and benefits. The approval tonight is for the period of July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2022. The last time they were assigned, it was for a one-year period. These employees include superintendent cabinet members, department directors, assistant directors, special education supervisors, community education supervisors, confidential employees, those that work in human resources and payroll, and others not affiliated with the bargaining unit, such as there's some food service workers and some others that are not associated with the bargaining unit. These employees are classified into four tiers. The following conditions are recommended for the independent employees. Conditions are consistent with the board parameters, especially with the DAS, although we reversed the wages on the DAS. The DAS had a 2% first year, 1.8, and we're proposing in the first year that independent employees receive a 1.8 increase on the salary schedule, and in the second year, a 2.0% increase on the salary schedule. In health insurance, no increases for those on the $15 and $25 copay plans in either year. Those on the single high deductible plan in calendar year 2021 would be a $20 per month Those on the family high deductible plan in the calendar year 2021 would be a $63.71 per month increase. In calendar year 2022, those on the high deductible single plan would be $12 per month and $50 per month for those on the family high deductible plan for the calendar year TSA contributions, to get them a little more consistent with the other groups, would be a $200 increase in 2021 and a $200 increase in 2022. That would have to be matched by the employee to get that. No increase in dental or life insurance. Administration recommends approval of this proposal.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the wages and benefits for independent.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melinda, second by Katie. Any questions, comments? All right, all of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 10.6, approval of adjustments to the 2020-21 calendar. Assistant Superintendent Julie Nielsen.
Good evening again. As I look at this report, I'm thinking, which order did we go in, and is this one out of order? On August 3, during the special board meeting, calendar adjustments were shared. This evening, we are asking for approval to use certain days in certain ways. August 18 and 19 are typically our K-5 assessment days, and that's typically where students come in, meet their teacher, they do an assessment with their teacher, and we are recommending, because that's the first day in for staff, that we make an adjustment for those two days for K-5 teachers, and that those two days at the elementary level would be used to front-load some of the professional development out of teaching and learning, where teachers would have the time to engage in curriculum professional development. And then the second day, they would have the opportunity to participate in a menu of activities where they would actually select, and it's more differentiated. But we would shift those two days to professional development so that when we get to workshop week, which is the 24th, 25th, and 26th, it would allow elementary teachers an opportunity to really engage with the safety piece, and that then would be the focus. In addition, August 31 through the 3rd, which we had discussed our first four days of school, we talked about kind of a warm-up or a ramp-up to school. We would use the 31st through the 3rd as an opportunity for elementaries, now that we're in the hybrid. Elementary teachers may bring in half of their A group and half of their B group on different days, and it would allow them the opportunity to go through the safety procedures and safety protocols with really small groups, like five or six kids at a time. And we feel like that would be best as we get rolling and get the kids back into school. In addition, we would talk about which bathroom they're going to use, what do transitions look like in the hallway, where are you going to keep your backpack? And then at the secondary level, on those two days, the 31st and the 31st and the 1st, we would be looking at that transition of our sixth graders and our ninth graders. That was always on our calendar to make sure that those students had the opportunity to enter and have time within the school. So for the secondary level, the 31st and the 1st would be devoted to sixth and ninth graders, so each group could be in half. And then on the 2nd and the 3rd, we would begin to run our hybrid schedule. So on the 2nd, the A group would come in, or whatever group it was, A group would come in, and then on the 3rd, the B group would come in. So at the high school level, that would give the students and the staff the opportunity to run the schedule, to say, is this going to work? What are the things we need to do? But again, the focus for those days really are around the safety and the teaching and the modeling. Before, we would ramp it up with the 8th as the start of our hybrid in a B day. And so that day would start as the B day, because it's a Tuesday. Any questions?
All right, so we'll entertain a motion to approve the adjustments to the 2020 calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Pat, second by Katie. Question?
Sharon.
Oh, Sharon, oh, gosh, all right.
It's hard to tell what I'm asking.
Ears are not working.
So that whole first week from the 31st to the 3rd, there is no trans-
Correct.
At any level for any student?
Correct. Christine, is that the same for secondary? I'm saying correct, and I'm like, eh, secondary? So on, that would be then for secondary, the 2nd and the 3rd, but at the elementary level, and now I'll tell everyone, I'm looking at you, at the elementary level, they would be setting up those times with families to come in. And so it would probably be two to two and a half hours that they would be focused in just on a small group of students.
So that first week of school, then, for an elementary student, would just be two to two and a half hours?
Correct.
All across all-
For the four days, yes. And that would allow then the teachers just to focus on that small group throughout the day.
And at the secondary level, it would be, the first two days are for sixth graders and ninth graders, like Camp 6 or whatever.
Correct.
And then the second two days would be in hybrid for 6 through 12.
Yes.
Everyone, and they would be going through their regular schedule and everything like that.
Correct. It would be an A day and a B day.
Anyone else? All right, so all those in favor of the adjustments to the calendar, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our final item, 10.7. So the next item on our agenda is approval of a superintendent employment contract. At an earlier meeting, the board unanimously passed a motion to hire Julie Nielsen as the district's next superintendent and to authorize me to work with the school board's attorney to negotiate a three-year contract with Ms. Nielsen. The salary and benefits in the first year of Ms. Nielsen's contract were not to exceed the salary and benefits provided in Dr. Jacobus's contract. School board's attorney and I met with Ms. Nielsen and have also had multiple follow-up conversations with her. The negotiations, of course, were cordial and professional. As an outcome of this process, the school board's attorney has sent the board a contract that meets the parameters the board established in its earlier motion. Under the proposed contract, Ms. Nielsen will receive the same salary in 2020-21 that Dr. Jacobus would have received in 2020-21. However, Ms. Nielsen will not receive a salary increase for the next two years. Dr. Jacobus has historically received annual raises, and he also had the right to obtain an executive physical, although he never exercised that right. In lieu of any salary increase or any right to an executive physical, Ms. Nielsen will receive a $1,000 increase to the amount of the district's TSA matching payment. The increase will take effect immediately. The other provisions in the proposed contract generally track the contracts that the board had with Dr. Jacobus. The proposed contract does recognize that the district is required to pay Ms. Nielsen for vacation days she earned but did not use in the past. But the school board's legal counsel has advised that the district would be obligated to pay for those days regardless of whether the board and Ms. Nielsen entered into this contract. The proposed contract also allows Ms. Nielsen to carry over some of her accrued sick leave, which has been a standard practice when staff are promoted. As the individuals who were tasked with negotiating the contract, the board's attorney and I are recommending that the board approve the contract for Ms. Nielsen. I will now entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so moved by Louise, second by Katie. Any questions or comments? I know you got this a little bit later, but hopefully you had a chance to read it. All right, so hearing none, we can vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, you're official. Awesome. All right, 11.0, reports and comments, 11.1 are-
I want to thank Julie and Assistant Supes, it takes the, maybe, thanks to people. There's a lot of folks, you're going to meet the team leaders that did the plan at the They did a phenomenal job to get us where we are today, so this is, this team is just phenomenal. Thank you so much.
So I'll do a couple shout-outs, and then I'll pass it off to Christine. I would like to give Pete, my friend Pete in the warehouse, a big shout-out. Like I said earlier, he is off ordering supplies. He is finding supply deals that no other districts can find. And working on a hot dock all day long, moving supplies is not a fun job. So to Pete, as well as our custodians and all of our facilities, who keep our schools looking just incredible. Just driving around our school district, we should be so proud of our facilities. And next to Tara Goble, the health and safety work that's been done, her working with our epidemiologists, county health nurses, like I said, she was already out training our health assistants and our other LSNs. She has done a tremendous job, and she is actually brand-new to that position. Anna, within the last month?
Formally.
Formally, yes. She was a nurse in the district, but this is a new position for her formally. So just doing a tremendous job helping to lead the health and safety team.
And I would like to thank all of our secondary administrators, and particularly the master schedules, the master schedulers. So our master schedules deal with the entire, all the scheduling at the middle schools and high schools. So Sarah Scone-Stokes, Ashley Ruka, Alicia, Darren, Kelly, Justin, and Allison and Molly have been spending every single day looking at the schedule to work out the hybrid model, to work out the Virtual Learning Academy, and they're, and today I met with them again, we meet almost every day. They're probably really tired of seeing me on WebEx. And they're just calm and very patient and really want to do what's best for kids, and so I appreciate every single one of them and all the time they've put in.
I would like to express gratitude to the elementary principals, who have worked collaboratively and tirelessly to make sure that we are ready to move forward with the hybrid, or if we have been in distance or in person. They have plans for every option, and we are ready to move forward. The group also included some work from the assistant principals at the elementary level, who also put forth a valiant effort. And we are ready to meet the needs of our students and ready to go in a little bit deeper and make sure that we are poised for a successful return on the 31st and also on the 8th.
And thank you, yeah, we just cannot say thank you enough for all your hard work. All right, 11.2, our board member reports. Does anyone have anything? I know I'm not.
I just want to take a minute to thank all the community members that sent emails, phone calls. You are the voice of the kids, of the community. It was not possible to reply to every email, so I do apologize, but I did read every single email. So I wanted to just take this minute to say that, yes, we did read, we did listen, we did hear you. It was not a wasted time to send that email, we do read them. And thank you for taking the time to advocate for your children, your spouses, your friends. There were many emails that were not just for your own kids, they were for neighbors, they were for whatever, and so thank you for doing that. It's a lot to read, but it is very nice to hear the comments, and the emails were very respectful, so I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
I think I echo everything that Katie said, but what I loved most was the conversations, and I thought they were very thoughtful. They were, you know, from the parent's perspective, I think that our most valued commodity is our children, and the second most valuable commodity is our teachers. So kudos to them for stepping up to the plate and taking on this journey at unprecedented times. And I just hope and pray that it all works out and that, you know, everybody stays safe. safe. But thank you for sharing your perspectives, and anytime you want to call me, please don't, oh, no, you can.
One thing I wanted to add to what Katie and Sharon are saying is that a lot of the emails I got said, I'm sorry for emailing you, or I apologize for emailing you too much, and I want to tell the community, please don't ever be sorry for having, you know, having the need to tell us something. This is your, you know, we're supposed to be your voice and your representatives, and we're supposed to reflect back what you tell us, and so don't be apologetic, just be, you know, we want to hear from you, and that's all. And we thank you for telling us, all, like, 600 of you who emailed me.
Yeah, I'll just say the same thing, thank you to everyone in the community, including parents, staff, everybody that reached out to us, I did read all the emails, I responded to all of them, except for probably some that were from today, but it is nice to hear all the different views and to really get into more in-depth conversations with some people as well. So, and like Simi said, continue to send us emails, that is our job, is to hear what the community is thinking, and I'd love to continue to get those emails.
I would echo what everyone else has said, the level of respect, whether there was agreement or disagreement, was something that I'm really proud of our community. I'm also very proud of the community, how many, I believe Katie mentioned it earlier, talked about not only their personal situation, but were concerned about, concerned about children across the board, concerned about parents across the board, concerned about our staff across the board. So, taking that larger perspective, I saw so much of that, and it was really welcome.
Thank you. Pat?
I'm just going to say ditto of that, and thank you to our chairman for keeping us on track tonight, making the meeting go smoother than the last one.
Oh, but, yeah, no, definitely, I mean, it's all been said, but thank you so much. We had lots and lots of emails, and I was not able to answer them either, all of them, so apologize for that, but thank you for the input, and like I said, no, we did read them, we do read them, so. 12.0, future meeting dates, Thursday, August 27, and Thursday, September 10 are our next regular board meetings, and with that, we are adjourned.